Okay, welcome everybody. We appreciate all the participation here and we will begin tonight's city council work session. Okay, we'll jump right in with item one. We are going, I, a discussion on coordination and communication between EMS, EMT department, and emergency management, but also, I think that it would, it's a good time to just evaluate. Carrie, first of all, I want to thank Carrie for her efforts in putting this together. I know that you've put in a lot of hours and, and they are appreciated. I do think that, you know, as we have built this out, there's a lot of moving parts and, you know, part of us are bumping into other parts of us and I think that's to be expected. But I, I thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to just review the emergency management department status and so I have asked Carrie to give a report. And then Rachel, I know that you have some comments and some concerns which I think are really important to be heard and so after Carrie, we'd ask you to come up and share some of your thoughts.
Right, we come here. This is my time. Yes? All right, just so just as a background, in 2019, the Utah Legislature passed a bill which at the time was called House Bill 96 that required every city to have an emergency manager with an emergency management plan. And at that time, I was appointed as the emergency manager. And so in those last four and a half years, I've been attending all of the trainings, all of the meetings, both in the county and in the state and even some federal trainings that, that are brought before me. In that, we were going forward and in small incremental steps. It was then determined that we, after, after we got a, we were instrumental in getting a grant with the county, excuse me, to have a comprehensive emergency management plan in conjunction with the planners at the county level. And so we were, and the mayor and I, and maybe trying to think of who else went with us, but you and I for sure went and were given kind of the overview by Peter Quitner, who is the county emergency manager and what that entails and how that would roll forth. We were assigned one of the county planners, Emily Schuh, has to be our liaison and to be the person that would help us write our plan specific to Woodland Hills. Other cities have one, the county just finished writing their overall plan. And part of that plan then is just coming together and looking at kind of a template on how that plan would, would come to fruition. Now, some of that would be specific to, just to the city overall and some would be specific to individual parts of our city. But overall, an emergency management plan is to coordinate the efforts on a city on any different, in any different kind of incident. It's broad enough that it doesn't have to be specific to the incident, it can just be there. Now, remember, an emergency can be everything from, we have a water main breakdown on Maple to we're evacuated for a fire, to we've had a mass casualty earthquake. I mean, there can be a lot of different moving parts with what an emergency means. And so, the emergency management plan is a public document that shows how we would work together in, in any type of incident. Everybody basically does their job that they already are currently doing. It just showcases that if something is missing, there's, there's a coordination on getting that in place. So we began in January. I mean, there's a couple of different things that are going on here with regards to communication. So with the plan and getting the plan in place, we began that in January with Emily. At the time, Mayor, you and I talked about who should be coming to those meetings and because we are a city of limited resources, we kind of had decided, okay, the parts where individual people were being impacted, they would be brought in for those discussions. And that's kind of the way we were going to do it. After two months, it appeared that that might not be the best plan, so we kind of put things on hold. In addition, the county had some additional things happening that kind of let us kind of step back for a little bit. We had a meeting this last week with the staff and the, Peter Quitner, who is the emergency manager for the county. And we have determined that it would be best if everyone came together to go line by line. I know, David, you don't like line by line, but we're going to go line by line through the plan. And we are going to meet one Wednesday morning a month to go through the plan. As the staff will be there, it'll be 8:30 to 9:30 and all of you are also welcome to come and give your input or just hear or see what's going on. It might be a different week each month, just depend on, just depending on scheduling. But for April, it will be April 12th, 8:30 here. If you would like to come, you're welcome to, to be here. We'll be starting from scratch with kind of a, a real basic model. Again, our desire is to have full cooperation and communication and getting our plan in place. After we get the plan finished, it will be brought before the council for a vote to accept and promulgate that plan. That probably won't happen, as we've talked about before, until the end of the year. Now, when we first formed the emergency management department, we had, we had a presentation that, that had a PowerPoint that you all watched when you approved this department. The department, emergency manager is over the department with two specialists. We have one section that will be for preparedness and one that is over security. Now, security, which is under the guidelines of our Utah County Deputy, Deputy Dutton, is our liaison with the county. That is a federal program that's in place. We will then be utilizing that program as well as kind of making whatever we need to do to make it Woodland Hills specific. That has just barely been started. We have a few volunteers that come to that. The preparation side is basically for residents who want to come and learn and that what we can do in volunteer aspects to supplement things that we might be doing on the city level. And in that case, we follow a state Department of Emergency Management Plan as our guide, which is called Be Ready Utah. And so all of the materials that we're currently using or the format we use comes from Department of Emergency Management here on, in the state of Utah. With that being said, for, for the security side, the neighborhood watch, we have Spencer Wells, who is kind of overseeing that. For the preparedness side, you've met Aaron Gilbert, he's over that. We've been following those steps. We've had several meetings. After a trial and error of which day really worked for those meetings, it has been settled that we will meet on the first Tuesday of every month to have a preparation meeting for, with both. People will come, they will be taught different things, different, whatever they have, we have planned, that's what they will be learning about. Now, there are certain subsets then of that plan based on the Be Ready Utah. So some of it might be food, some of it might be teaching how to use your generator, some of it might be gardening, anything that has to do with preparation will be on those nights. If there needed a subgroup, that will be on the third Tuesday. So we have both the first and the third reserved here at the city center to do those things. Now, one of the problems came in that one of those subset groups that met what had to do with medical, medical issues, which again is following that state guideline is, and, you know, I had hoped to, to be able to explain this beforehand, but let me explain it now. We, in no way, shape, or form, in any of those aspects of Be Ready Woodland Hills followed after Be Ready Utah, do we feel that we're going to take over anything. There is no aspect of any of the preparations to do anything that is already being done. We focused this last time on medical, meaning we think, we fully support the EMS program. Everything that we do, no one is getting called out when dispatch calls, someone calls dispatch, 911, they're going directly to our EMS, our first responders, everything. The medical team that subset that we formed in the city is to be, if there is a catastrophic event, meaning a huge big earthquake and the roads are out and we can't do anything and we have some mass casualties, EMS would still set up their form, their, whatever they want to do in their plan. We have identified doctors, nurses, and other people who are professionally trained in our city who, if their services are needed, could come and be here and show up under the direction of EMS to perform and set up if we need to do triage, if we needed to do whatever the case may be, someone's having a baby, whatever. They would be the ones that could help the EMS, but only in the event of a trauma. I mean, in the event of a catastrophic type incident where we would not be able to leave our city. That is all. So we had the county emergency services bring their trailer up showing, showcasing what they have because they're willing to take their trailers, these mobile units around anywhere in the county. So they brought it up here to show us if we ever needed additional supplies other than the ones that our EMS already has downstairs on hand, they could bring their truck, trailer up and we would have full access to all their supplies. And so that was kind of the basics for having that particular meeting, is just to say, county, we would, if we need your help, you're going to have our backs. And they said, of course. So they take this trailer to every city and do this kind of demonstration if they're asked to do it. It's just kind of a normal thing, just to showcase that they have resources available that we don't have to spend the 30, 40, 50,000 to have these things on hand, that they have that. They have several of these trailers for different aspects of emergency management. They will be bringing up their communication trailer for the expo in May, just to showcase what types of things they have on hand that we could use if we had, if we had need for additional communications. So it was brought to my attention that, that that had been conveyed to the EMS department, specifically to Rachel. And so it is on me that I didn't follow up on that, but I was told specifically, don't worry, we're fine, we've, we've talked to them, it's fine, it's no problem. And so I was a little concerned when we got the email on, on Saturday. That was something that I had not expected. With that being said, I am open to all communication. I just need people to call me because if, I don't know when you have a question. And I think it's very important that it has to be a two-way conversation. I could write all day long to you and say, this is what's going on, but if I'm not answering the question that I don't know about. So I'd appreciate it if anyone would call. About two months ago, I suggested that we have a, a public safety meeting once a month during the week, during the business hours, that the fire chief, the EMS captain, law enforcement, and emergency management would just have a short meeting once a month to just coordinate schedules, to coordinate activities, to be able to say what's going on. That was probably in January and I haven't really heard back if that was ever approved or if we wanted to go forward. I'd like to put that out there. I think it would be an important aspect, just in emergency management to keep, and emergency services that we, we keep connected. In addition, when we, I think Janet remembers this, we, when, when she came forward and said to us at a council meeting, what day are we doing the expo? And so at that time, Janet and the chief and I were out in the hall and we said, how about that first Saturday, May 6th, it wasn't, wasn't going to conflict with Chipper Day and/or Mother's Day weekend? After that point, the chief and I and, and Aaron Gilbert met and we had talked about why we named the preparedness side Be Ready Woodland Hills after the Be Ready Utah, just to kind of keep some consistency, have the logo, et cetera. It, it appeared to me at that time that even though we had called it Fire Expo in the past, that we could expand it, that it would be Fire EMS and then Emergency Management could have part of that to make it just an overall preparedness fair. And at that time, the chief said that he thought that that would be a great idea to kind of rebrand it to be that Be Ready, more preparedness side. And so that's what we went forward and that's what then Janet okayed, that we could put the, the announcement in the newsletter, that it would be called Be Ready Woodland Hills, save the date. And that has been in the newsletter since January, to save the date for that. And so I'm sorry that if there are others who felt like they were left out. It appeared to me as well in planning that, that the chief had put Jenny Adams kind of as the liaison from the fire department, or maybe she's over planning it all, I, I'm not really sure. But, you know, they, they do the hot dogs, they have the helicopter come, they have a little booth, a little house-like thing for kids to go through. We have asked that the communication, communication trailer come up and a few other entities. And so I guess it was a week ago, Jenny sent an email out to, to Fire EMS and to us to say, is there anything else you need for, as we prepare? We have five weeks left, what do we need? And so we kind of said a couple of things that we were planning on doing, everyone having their space. I assume that Jenny's in, in charge of, and maybe I shouldn't have assumed that, of logistically where everything's going to be set up in the city center as well as outside. And so that's, as far as I know, is that that was a joint effort that communication had gone, at least between emergency management and fire, in terms of the name and all three entities being involved for that, as, as far as that night of having the training and identifying our, our preparedness side for potential catastrophic. Those people are not stepping in and taking over anything. They get paid a lot more money to do it somewhere else. And so they are just going to be connected in a way that if we needed them, they would be ready and available. And then that third item is the CEMP that you are all invited to come to on the 12th and we will do that once a month for an hour until the document is written. Do any of the council people have questions for me with regards to that yet?
No, go ahead.
I was wondering, do we need to be careful for that meeting to make sure we're not in a quorum?
No, because we don't have any business, we're not voting on anything, it's not, it wouldn't be considered a council meeting.
Yeah.
I, I spoke with chief, I mean, and he could come up and say, but I, I asked the chief, you know, if he was fine with the name change and, and adding to it. And we talked about how anything we could do to get more attendance, right? Fire Expo is a good thing.
It's the same conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I just asked, and, and I mean, I think, I think they're on board and good with all of that, the changes and having, hopefully drawing some more people. It seems like, seems like preparedness is a big thing right now, a lot of people are interested in it. And so I think it would be a real asset to the event.
All right. Thank you. Coral?
I assume that 8:30 time on, on the 12th is in the morning.
Yes, 8:30 in the morning and it will be here. And that, it'll be 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. once a month. And at the council meeting, the last council meeting of the month will tell you the date for the next month, just in case it's not the second, second Wednesday.
Jody, do you have a problem if, if too many show up? I, I heard.
Bring pizza.
I mean, if, if there's more than want to come on any given council meeting or staff meeting.
We can throw Carrie out, right?
There are other cities that are currently doing it and their whole entire council's coming, so I, I guess we better check on that just in case. But it seems to be, I, I've talked to several cities and they, like, if they have something that they are doing that is not voting, but maybe, you know, I defer to Jody on that. Kavin?
Yeah, I mean, first off, let me make it clear, I don't care about going line by line through something, I just think that's a horrible way of spending meeting time. I think line by line should be done offline by individual council members and then you bring your concerns from those lines to.
Well, the lines haven't been written, that's why.
I understand.
So.
So.
Note taken, but yeah, we're going to go line by line, sorry.
Let me just, I'm trying to figure out how in the world we went from a neighborhood watch to where we are today.
For emergency management?
Because it started as a neighborhood watch issue.
No.
Yes, it did.
No, it didn't.
It did start as an emergency, that was all it was, was neighborhood watch.
No.
And then, well, I'm looking at the minutes.
Yeah, my, my recollection is that, I mean, I, I know that we have a mandate by the state to have the emergency plan.
We, we put in.
But I do, my, my recollection is the same.
Okay, let me, let me be clear that we.
Do you guys remember when Aaron came and presented his slide?
I do, but just a minute, that's not step one. That was like step three. So I understand what you're saying.
That was the first time we heard anything about it.
No, it was not.
I'll go back and get those.
So, so here's the thing, I am right now looking at the January 24th meeting where a org chart was proposed and I don't see fire, EMS, or police, well, kind of, county deputy is on here.
Well, that's because this, this, okay, let me just back up then, David, because this org chart is not about the city, this org chart is only about the emergency management department. We formed the emergency management department in the fall and at that time, we said it will have emergency management with two people under. The two people, one side was preparedness and one side was, was the security, which was the neighborhood watch. It was not ever about neighborhood watch overall.
I'm just saying, this was approved on January 24th.
Yes, this is the, what we brought to you saying, okay.
So it wasn't the fall?
The fall is when we.
This is January 24th.
When we first talked about having an emergency management department and that's when the mayor and I went to the meeting.
Okay.
And we came back and you said, the council said, give us a chart identifying what is in the emergency management department. And that's what this is. Now, it is not part of fire and it is not part of law enforcement, it is separate.
I understand, but all of a sudden now, this department that somehow got formed is coordinating the effort across all these different areas and I'm just thinking, whoa, how did we get here?
What different areas are you talking about? Maybe that would be helpful.
Seriously?
Are you talking about the CEMP?
Everything you just talked about.
Okay.
You talked about, I mean, certainly we've got the, the, what used to be the Fire Expo that's now the Be Ready Woodland Hills Expo. Then we've got coordinating for an emergency disaster kind of a thing and coordinating all of the medical professionals in the entire city. I would assume that we would eventually get somewhere else. Then you're talking about coordinating all of the public works in case we had a major disaster flooding and I'm like, wait a minute, this is way more than we voted on in January 24th.
Let me step back then for a minute on that. Emergency management is about coordination. That's what an emergency management department comes. We had, I, I guess we should have invited all of them to come and listen to Peter last week, talk about this and how that works on the county level, how it works on the city level. Not only were we coordinated or tasked by the state to have an emergency manager, we are also tasked with having a emergency management plan, CEMP, which isn't just a willy-nilly document, it's a document that's a legal document, that's also FEMA qualified, et cetera. There's certain standards that have to be in place with that plan. So the plan is here overall, that's the coordination piece that you're talking about and it does cover the entire city. And so it just shows you on a different org chart, which we will come to as we are planning this, on that, those Wednesday mornings. And it will showcase the mayor and the council here, and then it will showcase where all of the departments fit in and each of them will have their roles, which is already what they're currently doing. It just showcases it separately. Nobody tells them what to do. It's not that kind of a thing, it's a, just a document, what, let me give you a little history. This came to be.
Carrie, you, you were like going back and forth between saying, this department's going to coordinate and then nobody's going to tell them what to do. Those two ideas cannot coexist.
Coordination does not mean dictate. Coordination just means that everyone knows where they're at. When emergency management, I, just a history, little history here, there was no such thing as emergency management before 2001, really. President Bush at the time said, obviously after 9/11, we need more coordination. And so that's when it started being formed on the national level, it went down to the state level, our county has had it for just over a decade. And now it's going into the, on a local level because they see the need to have coordinated efforts on every level of government. And so that is why it was, it was put into place. Now, in that being said, is that it's not, it's not about anyone telling someone else what to do, it's about saying, you're going to, you're still doing this, you're, the mayor still has this, the council still has roles. Fire, if it's a fire, still has roles, public works may have a role. Everybody has a role and it's just coming together in this comprehensive plan to showcase that so that there is, so that the loopholes can be filled. Now, as the plan is separate from then underneath that plan, and this is how all cities do it, you want your, your, government should not and cannot be everything for everybody. And so if a disaster happens, how do we help make sure our citizens are prepared? We live in a community that has been taught by on a lot of levels to be self-reliant. And so what, what this preparedness side of it does is it says, okay, we're going to have small little classes on how to do things, how to be prepared. It's not showcasing that the city is telling our residents what to do, it's a, it's a, an opportunity for the city to bring people together with training to say, if you would like to learn about this, this, or this, or if you would like to volunteer to help in a particular area, you, because of your skill set, you have the opportunity to do so. Again, that's a volunteer effort to help the citizens help themselves. Now, on the neighborhood watch side, which we only barely just started because we had to wait in terms of, of how we were organizing, that's just starting, that's also, preparedness is following the state's plan for preparedness. The neighborhood watch part is a federal program that we are using. So both of them are using established programs, we're not going rogue on either one, we're following the documents and the guidelines that are already put in place for both of those entities. Now, preparedness does have a bigger band of different things that people may be interested in being prepared for. Neighborhood watch has its set of things that will go forward, we're not to that point yet, but overall, the city then would come in and help facilitate those discussions, meaning the emergency management department, in training what people and whatever they would like trained to help themselves and maybe their neighbors, because that's what kind of community we are. And the CEMP is what's for the city as a whole. And that's why we're inviting everyone to come who would like to, to see what this plan entails. There are certain things that by law have to be in those plans. So it's not just a willy-nilly plan, it's a specific plan.
Well, so I guess.
And the plan does not have preparedness or security in it at all.
The concern that I have is, as things kind of went a little sideways this weekend, I feel like we went from what we thought was a very small plan, a very, I mean, a very, very basic organizational chart, and it kind of blew up in ways that were not well communicated or at all communicated. And it kind of blew up in ways that were not well communicated or at all communicated, would probably be a better way of putting it.
They were communicated.
Okay, I don't know to whom, but I don't have any email from you.
I could share those, I chose not to.
Okay, so, we don't have a lot of communication and now all of a sudden, we're like looking at this stampede of different things and everything and I'm just feeling like maybe we're way over our skis. And what I would propose is that we kind of dial things back a little bit to more of simplicity. And one question that I still have, and this is kind of an open question, not just for you, but for the entire council, is, okay, Dora's in charge of public safety, she's in charge of emergency management, how do those two play?
I'm very confused.
I don't understand that.
I, I don't know, I don't know what that means, I've been that for nine years and so.
Emergency management and public safety are not the same thing.
Well, let me just, let me jump in.
I appreciate what Dave's saying, and I'm not, are you finished?
Yeah.
I appreciate what you're saying. The way he just explained everything is the way everyone, except for Craig, maybe, feels on our EMS and fire group. And it's because of the lack of communication, zero to us. And maybe, maybe I didn't jump in the middle of everything and learn about it, what was gonna happen, because I didn't know they were gonna happen. But, but I really appreciate Dave's, not only his words, but his feelings about this. And so that's why we've jumped into this boiling vat that we didn't know was boiling and just had no warning or no communicate, no meetings, I've never been to one of these meetings and I'm a public safety guy temporarily, you know, apparently.
I'm exacted every time.
Well, so.
But you can't hold an 8:30 meeting for.
No, this 8:30 AM meeting, we just decided a few days ago. That's just something that was, and this is the first time that I've had an opportunity to invite you to it.
I'm looking at the chart and there's no meetings on there.
Okay, but I think what we need to step away from, I think, is, because I didn't want this to be, you know, accusatory in any manner. But I do think that we need to tighten it up, so.
I know Ben has something to say.
Right, and I'm gonna get to you, but I've been waiting longer than you have been, you may not know it, but.
Mayor, I signal you so you put me in your queue, you can go wherever you want with it, but that's why I don't just dive in there.
All right, so it seems, based on your explanation, so we've got three parts to this, so you've got the plan, the C E M P, and then security and preparedness. And based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like the preparedness arm is not a response team. It sounds like it's more about training. So I think that we need to make that point clear, that preparedness is, but it does sound like it crossed over when we start assembling doctors who are gonna act as a triage unit or something like that.
Well, we're not, we're not operating them, we're just identifying them so that if EMS said, this is over our head, we don't have enough people, we could then have them show up under their direction and have, just have another layer of response. It's just like if we have a fire, right?
But a more collaborative way of doing that would be to go to the EMS captain and say,
Well, we went to Craig, we went to Craig.
Could you put together a list of all the doctors and all the nurses within the city, those with medical training?
He might already have that.
And then make sure that you maintain that, you own that piece, that's coordination, and I agree with that.
And I think that we can learn though.
What is not okay is where you kind of go outside of that lane and start confusing the channels of communication, that's the problem I have.
We were, we invited everyone to come to that, including, I asked Craig to invite Rachel to come to that meeting. We also talked to Ted and we were told that there was no problem in having this gathering, that there was absolutely, it appeared to us that there was no problem.
But again, let's not, I don't wanna focus on the past, I wanna focus on looking forward.
Now we've identified that there is a problem, so why don't we just do a reboot of that?
And, and so what I'm saying.
And I think that would help.
Is that we are following, and I can send you the links to the Be Ready Utah site to showcase what we are following there, as well as the National Neighborhood Watch. So you can see, we're following two already established programs that we can get resources from and then we can dial it down to see what we need.
But Kerry, is that part of the plan, is that part of the?
No, this is totally separate.
So that's a totally separate, so we've got three separate efforts going on here, and so.
Three separate things, and so the C E M P.
I do have some concerns about some of this security and preparedness then, because that does involve a lot more coordination.
This is coordinating through the department, through the two specialists. One focusing on preparedness, because we do have residents who want to help be prepared. They've learned it in their church, they've learned it in their families, there are people who this is their thing. We have had people in the past in our city who have helped coordinate preparedness. That is nothing new to our city. And so having these areas, though, more focused, instead of just having residents show up, hey, we wanna prepare, it's broken down according to the state be prepared side, site, to have certain areas of concern that people could be prepared in. And we're, we've broken it down so that residents who want to volunteer, if their expertise is in here, they come to that meeting. If they don't, and it's only on that first Tuesday of the month, we're not holding willy-nilly meetings all over.
I don't think anybody's arguing about that part.
Goes.
Really.
And so it's not that there are, it's growing government, it's having the ability to teach and train and to get like-minded citizens who have a passion for one particular area of preparation to be able to meet each other. We used to know everybody in town, that used to be a thing in our town, we were one board at one time. Now, we're not that so small, we're growing, people don't know each other, this gives them an opportunity to voluntarily come together in whatever their expertise is. If it's gardening, then all of our master gardeners have already said, hey, we wanna teach people how to garden in Woodland Hills. We want them to be more self-sufficient in their food supply. If it's, you know, if it's something more technical, what do we need to do? There might be people who just have their hands and say, hey, if we have anything that we need to use our hands and those skills, then we'll utilize them there. But it's not, it's more organic than what you're thinking and it's.
Well, no, as I just said, I don't think anybody's arguing about this part. You keep bringing up the preparation part, I think that's fine. Go ahead and become the preparation coordinator, that's okay.
That's Aaron's job.
The part that I'm a little concerned about is the emergency management department and the fact that it has now confused me because I thought Dora was public safety, now we've got an emergency management department. And let me just throw the other layers out there so that we all know what they are. We've also got wards and districts and all this other stuff. And I'm, I'm just feeling like we were trying to push that part forward before A, it's fully baked and B, before we've truly communicated with everybody about, okay, this is how these different pieces fit together. Now, I realize that part of that is gonna come out of the plan and I get that, so that's fine, I understand that. But what I would recommend, if we're going to move forward with this, is that what we do is we actually start working on the plan and we coordinate with our public safety, because they're a huge part of the plan, and then our public works is another huge part of the plan. And then we bring the plan to the council, not this little tiny org chart that we approved back on January 24th.
That was just the start, because at this point, when we brought that org chart to you about what the emergency management department was, we hadn't started, we had just barely got the approval to be able to write the C E M P. So we were trying to showcase, they're two separate things. The department and those two subsections are different. The C E M P is required by law for us to have public safety, public works, the mayor, everybody's involved in the C E M P. That's a whole different thing, that's the plan, that's the one that you are all invited to come and participate in if you so choose. If you don't, that's okay. But that's a point, eventually, as it gets done and as it goes out, everybody will be able to review it, see it, question it, whatever, we'll have proper vetting before we vote on it. The plan is only one part of that. Now, let me step back just a second, because public safety and emergency management are not the same thing at all. Dora has to be over public safety. That involves the fire and any other other things that we deem as public safety. Emergency management is just that management, it doesn't have to do with those ins and outs of the safety aspect. I know that sometimes it appears based on the words that are used, that it overlaps, but it does not.
So in a disaster, who's in charge, who's got the red hat on?
It depends, it changes every time.
The mayor has all the power. In an emergency, he is commander in chief.
Unless, like during, when it was a federal incident for us. Now, we had a certain response, the mayor had a certain response for the city. But as, wherever it falls in there, there's a commander. So the mayor may not be the commander, but he would be the next level.
On the city level, which I think is your question?
On the city level is the mayor.
It's the mayor.
Under the direction of the council. The mayor is the one who can declare disaster, but if you remember last time, we had to do it as a council vote to give the mayor the authority to declare a disaster. And once that happens, that's a legal document that goes forward for a lot of different reasons. Now, there's still coordination depending on, and that's part, what part of the plan is that we'll talk about as we go forward, depending on, if it's fire, fire takes the lead. If it's a water break, you know, if that's considered an emergency, public works takes the lead on that. There are different people depending on the type of incident that would take the lead, because the mayor's not gonna crawl in the hole and fix the broken pipe and he's not gonna hop on the fire truck and put out the fire. But he's going to be in control as the government official who is here in the city.
And David, I think we've got, I mean, as far as the plan, that is, I think that we're pointed in a good direction on that. I think that we now have, and Rachel, you and I spoke briefly on this too, I do think that EMS needs to be part of the discussion. Dora, I didn't appreciate the inclusion of you, because I think that you really should be, I didn't appreciate your role. But I, we, I mean, we've got Corbett coming, we've got Craig coming. I mean, it's basically all the staff except Lori, who will be showing up. Chris, I think, the guy holding the purse strings, you probably.
Yeah, he was on the Zoom.
But, so I think that on the plan side, I think that we're moving in a good direction. I still do have some concerns though, like it's security, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory if it's, if it's a neighborhood watch. But this preparedness piece of it, it still sounds like a response team as opposed to just an educational resource.
No, no response.
If it's a response team, well, then I think we need to make sure that we're clear on that point, that emergency or that preparedness is not going to be deploying doctors who will then be onsite.
No, 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 only if asked.
By whom?
Only if Rachel comes and says, hey, we don't have enough staff in town, we can't transport to the hospital, because the roads are out, there's been this huge big.
It starts way before that. To finish answering Dave's question, who's in charge? If a school bus tips over in our city.
Right.
I want Rachel and Chief Northup in charge.
Well, yeah.
Under the mayor.
Why wouldn't they be?
Well.
We might have to hire.
We just wanna make sure that that's clear, I don't know that that's clear.
Yes, of course, whatever the incident is, that's why we have the plan in place, because the incident will change depending on what it is. Now, if there is a spill.
But I haven't heard Ben's comment yet.
Yeah, I know, I.
Let me finish answering.
You've talked 45 minutes, Kerry, I think we've heard.
But Dora, the mayor did ask me a question.
Yeah, so let's try to, let's all be courteous.
Yes, sorry.
So, Ben, go ahead. Yeah, this is a big lead-up, this better be good.
It's not going to be, just so you know. I just wanted to bring up, you know, I would recommend, so October 25th of last year is where all the minutes are on when this initially was proposed. And that will, I think, help answer a few questions, because it does talk about that construct of what the whole program looks like and, you know, and I think it's going well, and I think it is, we need clarity. And I love the fact that we've having this discussion around, you know, the emergency manager, you know, the fire chief, the EMS director, you know, they're all advisory roles to the mayor. He then makes those decisions, you know, and for emergency response, at least this is my understanding of it. Emergency response is for the here and now. When there is something that's going on within fire, firemen are on it with Craig's direction, right? For medical, it is Rachel, right? But I have never felt personally in all my discussions, now I have maybe a little bit more insight just because when I have a question, I'll call Kerry or Aaron likes to call me all the time and talk to me at who knows what time. No, but, so I'm able to ask them a lot of those questions, but really, I've never felt from any of them like emergency management's a deploying entity of any sort. They are, if the mayor says, hey, I need this information now, emergency management has done the forework, they've documented a potential plan and they present that to the mayor. Instead of them collaborating on, at the point of emergency, we're trying to get that preparation ahead of time, right? If it's fire, emergency management's really not involved unless fire asks them to be.
Right, exactly.
If it's medical, emergency management's not involved unless medical asks them to be.
So we just need to make sure that there is a clear channel for communication.
And the same with public works, if public works said, hey, we need this, it comes from the entity and that's why the plan is so important, to showcase where those relationships are. But yeah, there's no deployment, there's, if we need resources, Kerry, how do we get those resources? This is what we need, that if they can't get it themselves, if it's not already in their, their plan individually. That's all it is.
All right, I think this has been a valuable discussion. Does anybody, I was gonna ask Rachel to come up and really stir the pot, so.
I just wanted to clarify just a little bit on emergency management, look at it, you look at it a little more simple.
Is that on, Craig?
You've got a control module, computer, you got the input, you got outputs. So we're operational, public works, city, EMS, fire. So we're down here, we're doing all the busy work. You have emergency manager and then you got mayor and the city council. The only thing that the emergency manager does is they'll come up and say, what do you need? What do you need? Oh, I don't need anything right now. Rachel, what do you need? I don't need anything. Mayor, what do you need? We need food, we need shelter, okay? Now, now they go out to that other bridge that's under emergency manager. So like, we need a hospital set up, because we have a mass casualty situation. We're calling that as incident command. So we tell, we need a hospital. She gets it, she gets it going and it's all under the direction of that. She's not, she's not coming to us and telling us what we're gonna be doing. And that's the important part about being a good emergency manager, is staying in that role and not trying to take over a scene. But Peter Quintner came up here during our brief, well, called him up as an emergency manager. That guy come up, stood by my side, what do you need? He had a helicopter for me, he got crews to get up in there and see what was, what the slide was from the next day. He helped us do evacuations. So it's just important that that role stays in that bubble. Even the city council can go and say, emergency manager, our residents need beds or whatever. You got it, I'll work on it.
Right.
That's what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, and as you explain that, that makes perfect sense and I agree with that. I just, my, my point is, I think we got a little over our skis.
Well, I think we just need to keep it in that context. If we can keep it within those guidelines, it's gonna be a win for everybody.
Yeah, would that, would that person, emergency manager, also communicate with, with the church if they wanted, if they?
That would be one of their groups, like say they need food.
Like the district leaders.
Blankets, whoever's in that section, you know, whether it's Aaron, like, you know, whatever he's gonna be in charge of, he can reach out and get, that's what Peter Quintner does, he has resources.
Yeah.
And they're not guiding, but once again, that should be defined in this layout when we're first making it. And that's what we'll do, is the definitions of each role.
And, and, and just.
Where it doesn't overstep.
To Craig's point, you know, one of the, some of the people that I have meetings with monthly are Red Cross, Team Rubicon, Church of Scientology, those are the people who have resources that they bring to a city. Those are the people who have resources that they bring to a city that we can use in a match situation. Those are people who are ready to deploy and help, but it's because you ask for help, right? It's because you do that. Now, recently, you probably are all aware of, because ecclesiastically, there were, there were entities, I will say, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, sent something out to the state presidents in all of Utah and asked them to specifically meet with every emergency manager in the state. So I was called in, Salem was called in, and they both said, what do you need? And I said, can you send out, as you all know, at the town hall meeting, we had put together a flyer on how to do a sandbag. Because we have not yet decided if we're going to use sandbags. So that flyer, I asked them to send that out, and they said they would on our behalf. So that if, if Corbett or Craig said, Carrie, it is time, we need sandbags, right? I've ordered the sandbags as emergency manager. We have not yet filled them because it's not time to fill them. But we also know because the, what they're, what the church said, we can tell, get you the volunteers you need on the day you just say. So if Craig and Corbett came to me and said, Carrie, we need three thousand volunteers today, I make one phone call. Instead of Janet trying to figure it out, they'll get the, they get the volunteers. We have the sandbags, we can, Corbett has the connections, we can get the sand here. We can get that done as fast as we need to. But it's because, just like Craig said, I say, what do you need? And they say, we need this now. And that went out through ecclesiastical means, but it was not my doing. I was called in for that need.
I, I think one thing that we're, it's going to be very important in this is when the emergency manager shouldn't be making decisions to just activate the emergency management system.
Right.
It should be from the direction of the council and the mayor. Now, if I say I need a hospital, things aren't good. So from an IC's perspective, I could, they could be ordering up all kinds of stuff. But I could activate the emergency management system that way. But I think as long as we don't activate it without the council's knowledge, and just so you guys know what's going on, because it has been, it's been very confusing. And it's taken me a little bit to separate all the little different groups. And we've talked about it, and I think moving forward, I think we're moving in the right direction because the communication is going to be much better. And, I mean, I got one question for you. Do you think you can lead the team to build the emergency plan?
I do. If we, I think that if we, if we can have great communication, we can have regularly scheduled meetings to go over things. If we can have everyone on board to go through that CMP, T E M P, I think that we have a good chance of making this something that's valuable for the city.
Because it, it's, it's going to be important that this is a team. It's, there should be no eyes. It should always be we, us, the city, because that's who it is. But I, I think we're heading in the right direction. So I just wanted to help clarify that.
Thank you, Craig.
Chief, before you leave, do you think the emergency planning, planning commission lead head should be a council member or not? Maybe that's putting you on the spot.
We did ask Peter Quintner that question, and there are some reasons why in some cities it's related to funding, that why that, that is.
Run, Craig.
Oh, Deputy Dutton.
Carrie, have me off this. Oh, make sure the mic's on.
Oh. Oh, Craig, you got to come up and repeat everything.
No, he turned it off. He turned it off on his way out.
Oh, good.
From what I understand, there is some federal funding that comes to the emergency manager for a city or town. But if they are an elected official, the city or town cannot receive that.
Right. And that is about, just about a thousand dollars for us. And we, at this point, until we can actually build our department to a right level, because we can't afford to pay anybody, and people are trained, are wanting to be paid if they're in this position, with grants and other things, we think we're going to be okay. Most, the grants are all based on population, and that's why we won't get hardly any money. It doesn't, wouldn't really be a benefit to us, right, at this point? But if we get bigger, or if we go beyond that, it could be. But Peter did tell us, you know, fire and law enforcement and others that would be very, very active in a disaster should not be in the role, just because then they, they need to be focused on their role.
And to your question, Doral, there, there's not, other than that, there's not any reason why a council member can't be it.
Unless it's a thousand dollars a year in grants we're losing. I mean, I'm just thinking, I didn't know that, you know, so.
There is, there, there is, but I mean, at, at the same time.
It all adds up, you know?
You know, filling, filling the position, I, I mean, I think Carrie is, is exceptionally qualified to act as the interim department head. I mean, and this is, this is a temporary role.
So to that point, and I, again, I'm not trying to demean anyone, especially you, Carrie. But should we be looking for a person, someone who is willing to volunteer in this role, and, and look to, you know, move to the next step where?
On, on top of that, on top of that, you should find someone like the fire department for twenty-five years, a volunteer chief. That's what we have and had for years. So I don't think you need to pay an, an emergency manager.
And the mayor and I have had this discussion, that.
That's my opinion about it. It should be volunteer.
My role, and I, and it is volunteer. I don't get paid a cent to do it. But what I'm saying is that as we progress and move forward in building the department, to get it built to a, to a point, and that I am actively looking for people who may be willing to put in the time. Because as you know, it takes a lot of time.
I'll give you a cent.
Thanks. It takes a lot of time. And, and, and starting this, it takes a lot of time. A lot of time that I've dedicated to the city in this, in this aspect. Now, I hope to get it to a place where then someone else who comes in, who would do it in a volunteer role because it was established. And I would like to see it established so that it, it's a benefit to our community overall, and that relationships are built, so that when it's turned over to someone else, that they feel comfortable and not overwhelmed.
So, I mean, and, and as a council, it is your call. I mean, I, I will say that. I, I, I think Carrie is, I mean, she's very dedicated, and made a lot of sacrifices. But it, I mean, if the council does feel that it would be better served, and, and you want to start accepting applications, I'd rather not have to go through that process.
It's, it's too early anyway, you know? Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Carrie.
What was that?
I said, thank you, Carrie.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think that we can, oh, Rachel, I thought she spoke for you.
I don't think.
And I thought you were really on a roll finishing before.
Now, be sure to turn it on, because you might.
We're not. I've been keeping track, and I'm going to speak for ten minutes longer than we've already gone. So I do need to first apologize. As soon as I wrote that email, like, I was like, I should have left Craig out of it. And I called him before I even forwarded it to him after I gave it to you and said, I'm so sorry I mentioned your name. Because the discussions we have had were like, I don't know, it's their thing. I don't know, it's their thing. And so I just extrapolated from that, that he was, did not know. This is everything else I stand by. But I should not have done that. And so I apologized to Craig, and I would like to apologize for you for bringing his name into that. This is my thing. So I think that, like I said, the biggest problem is not miscommunication, it's zero communication. Like I, all of those things you said, I know nothing. Zero. I don't know, like, I didn't even know enough to ask questions of anything because I didn't know any of it was going on. I think when Craig explains it, it's like a very no-brainer thing to go, oh, yeah, that totally makes sense, that totally makes sense. But that is not what is happening. So I would like to, so this is kind of how it came to my attention, is that I got this email, and again, not to my EMS city email. And I know that, that that department has it because I did get to that email, Salem's Plan. This just came to my personal email. It's, it went to several of my EMTs, but not all of them. And other, I don't know, medical personnel is what you're talking about. But I'm going to read it to you because the idea that this gives is not, we are just here for when EMS asks for help. So this went out to the community. So this is what the community is under the impression this is. So it says, we have a new, sorry, Aaron, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, but my name is Aaron Gilbert. I only drive a short bus. So, I oversee a new city department called Be Ready Woodland Hills. This department is tasked with helping the city of Woodland Hills and its residents prepare for all short and long-term emergencies. As part of this preparation, we would like to create an emergency medical committee who will help organize a Woodland Hills-based emergency medical team, which will be available to support our community in case of a major disaster. Any major disaster that affects our city as well as surrounding communities, county and/or the entire state, will consume all the outside emergency support resources that our city currently depends on. For this reason, we would like to create our own emergency medical support structure to handle any city residents' medical or trauma needs. I am therefore reaching out to all current and former medical and health professionals that live in our city to ask for volunteers to participate with the Woodland Hills Emergency Medical Committee. If you're interested in participating, and then it just says where it's at, which, and that was on a fire night, so none of our people could go anyway. But like, EMS is not, not mentioned. You know what I mean? There is no, it says, we will provide emergency services. I mean, I'm the captain of EMS, emergency medical services. And so that is my introduction to this department, because I have never been spoken up or spoken to. And so to me, I was like, there's no miscommunication. I mean, that implies that there's some communication. And there has been zero. And so I had some of my EMTs calling me, talking to me, like you said, on the department, and they're ticked. And I'm ticked because it's like, we train for these things, not just like the, to a house call, you know? We train for big emergency, big emergencies, big scales, for triage, for, and nothing. There has been, and I am for emergency preparedness, absolutely. But what this is setting up is two separate things. And we can say that it's all supposed to be one, but that is clearly not what is happening. And that is my concern. Because, like I said, communication is always the biggest problem. It is like that in training, when we train for our big mocks, it is like that in every real situation. Communication is the hardest thing to maintain because everybody's doing their thing. And I just don't see that already there's no communication. And so that does not give me a lot of hope for this. But also, like, I would think that you would want the boots on the ground, some buy-in, you know, to like, we're part of this. And that has not, I feel like this is almost a like, well, you got to pass it before you know what's in it, kind of a thing. And then we'll just be told where we're at. You know, like I, for myself, I don't care. But I am super offended for my EMTs who, maybe you guys know how many hours they put in, but tons, they, you still won't know.
Hundreds and hundreds of hours.
So many hours. And it really, like, to this, to goes out to the community, it really does look like this is not our thing anymore, you know?
That was never the intent, that if I could have Aaron come and speak to what you said, because he is the one that sent the email. So Aaron, would you please come and, and speak to, to why?
Are you done, Rachel? Are you done?
And, and let me just say though, but Rachel, I think those are all really important. I want you to have a serious table. I think that moving forward, that's what we need to make sure happens. Based on what you said, I think that it, it was a misfire. And it was something that, and I don't think anybody would disagree with that. And so, you know, this is again, one of those instances where as we try to, to build something like this, we're going to bump into each other. So I, I think that that's, so thanks for your.
So, and I agree, but my, you're welcome. I was hot to trot. But I think that we need to make sure, and I was not like, I don't think that this is like, communication goes both ways. You could have just called and asked me. Because I really think that as we've seen, other people are confused as well. And I think that things are happening that are not quite going, like, it's different. It's different in how it's actually being executed than, than it would appear. I mean, this is not just like the impression, or this email does not just say, we are going to do this thing so that we can support EMS. It's not any of the things that you said that that committee was for.
Yeah, and I think.
And so that is my worry.
To, to, to your point, I think had that very same email only been sent to you with a sentence that said, we would like, I mean, again, you're talking about emergency management as what can we do to help, right? That's what you're saying.
That's a good example.
So had the email been sent just to her as our EMS captain?
Perfect.
And just to Craig as our fire captain, and just to Deputy Dutton as, as our police, and said, we want to put these groups together, we need your help, can you do it? That would have been perfect. No problem. But that's not what happened.
Right.
It went around all of that, and that's the problem.
I think part of it is, I, I agree that there could have been some things that were done differently, and I think it's okay to learn and move forward. I also, as I told you at the beginning, I asked to have a public safety council that would have fire, EMS, law.
Again, like, totally news to me.
And, and I know, that was put forward, and it was mostly talked to with, with Craig and myself, and to, and the deputy to say, okay, this is something that we would like to do. None of us went forward making it happen. And so I take that as that we were all equally.
I hate all of you.
And so, and so I will, I will.
And suburbs.
Right. And so, so I think that, I think that that's all we needed to do was.
So that's what I'm talking about. When I talk about getting over our skis.
To make it go forward. To go forward. Is we had the conversation. We had the conversation, and it didn't go forward. And I, at the time, didn't know exactly how we should make it go forward. I did not want to step on toes making it go forward. I'm the only one out of that group not paid to be here. And so I am making sure that if it needed to go forward to the mayor or to who, but I will make sure that we have that set up, that it's every month that we can have that meeting so that there is no further miscommunication.
Well, and so that's why I am like, you know, if it had been one of those things, you know, when you're like, well, why don't you call and ask me? If it had been any one of those things, then it would be like, I didn't have any clue. Like, this is a huge thing. It's not just like, oh, we forgot to tell you about this one meeting, right? Like, I am not a part of this, even a little bit. And that's a problem if there's a medical emergency in this city. That's a big problem.
And I guess that I think that, Rachel, part of it is, is in, in talking with, with the chief, that I had assumed that he talks to you all the time. And so that was, that, and I should have, I should have just asked you, chief, that did you convey this to Rachel? And then not knowing, then I could have reached out a little bit better. But since I didn't send the emails, I would like Aaron to respond to.
Sure.
Because he's the one that did send that out.
Well, Aaron, come up here. Can I ask a, a quick stupid question?
Only a stupid one.
Perfect. It's my ignorance here, but how, what is the reporting structure with, you know, you and Craig? I guess I've always assumed you report to Craig, and maybe that's me being stupid. Rachel? Not John.
Not John. So I do, but I do report to Craig, but on clinical issues.
Hey, Rachel, we need to, if you'd speak into the microphone.
I apologize. I'm asking you, as Aaron's taking your mic.
So I report to Craig like, I don't know, how do we describe that? Like, I make the medical decisions.
If EMS is under fire.
It's under fire, like, as you go technically, but like.
The procedure is covered in med.
Right. I, I mean, I have the, those are the, the meetings that I go to.
Certifications.
To the, right, like, like.
So for our knowledge, communication should go to both of you versus just Craig? Depending on if it.
Depending on if it...
Because that's not what this says.
Hey, I'm just trying to get logistics. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Erin, let's hear it.
So first of all, I only got a B in English, so my writing skills is not very good.
Well, it sounds like it's very persuasive.
It works. Well, I didn't even go to college.
They can't hear you in the room.
Well, it's because I'm facing the other direction. Okay, I'll try and speak louder. First of all, I'd like to confirm with, or appreciate and clap for the way our chief explained the way the preparedness program is supposed to be there. And I really want to make sure everybody knows that everything that I'm trying to organize is to be a resource for my leaders, for the departments. I have no aspirations to do any leadership in running anything. I want to make sure that when she gets the call saying, we need to set up a facility with surgeons, surgeons who can actually perform medical conditions that I'm, I think EMS can't handle, but I appreciate though, the, I'm, I'm not appreciate, I apologize for miscommunicating or not communicating properly with, with our captain. I thought I was doing it right by going to the chief. But I, call this learning, learning curves. I will make sure that, is there anybody else I need to communicate with besides our captain? I don't know. I'm learning. Yeah, I do that too. But anyways, there's, but there are 12 different categories of preparedness that I am focused on, and they're gonna support public works, they're gonna, they're gonna support, they're gonna support all different aspects of our, our community, and I need you leaders to be one cohesive, cohesive unit, to be able to use the resources that I'm, I'm trying to raise money. I'll talk to you guys later about ideas I've got to raise money and to increase taxes that are coming to our city from sales, buying products. It's kind of a cool, cool idea. All that is to help us be able to fund the preparedness things that I think the city needs to have in place. And it all takes a lot of money, a lot of money, and, and we're limited on what we have revenue-wise to be able to spend on our preparedness. And I recognize that. So I'm trying to figure out how to identify what those things are that we need, and then how we're gonna raise the money to be able to do it. That's all I'm trying to do.
And Erin, I, I also want to make sure that you know that your efforts are appreciated. I mean, I, here again, you're volunteering your time, and thank you for that. And so this is not meant to, and I don't think anybody is intending to accuse, this is just, this is a learning process, but, but we do appreciate your efforts too.
I got thick skin. All right. If I, I got thick skin, if I make mistake, just...
Perfect.
Yeah, it was pretty close to bulletproof, but I have to wear my armor with me.
And we can tell from your presentation a while back that you have a lot of knowledge in exactly what we need in our city. So your volunteer efforts are going to go a long ways to help us be prepared, and I appreciate that.
And I'll try and give you city council a little more heads up on some other stuff that I'm planning, because guess what? There's more coming.
Perfect.
And I'm, I'm, I'm always above my skis. Ask my chief operations officer. He says I'm way over my skis all the time.
Get bigger skis.
The only thing I would ask, and, and I think this is an ask that isn't just about this issue, but really anything, is, you know, we, we should always work within the current structures unless we specifically make a decision in council meeting to change the structure. But that's, that's where, I don't want a new department that's going to completely change the structure. I'm okay with a department that does exactly what the chief asked, or said, how can I help? But what that means is that we then need to coordinate within our existing departments. And that means sometimes it's hard, sometimes it means doing, going that extra mile to communicate directly with, with each person, making sure that we're okay on all the different levels. But that's, that's what builds that cohesive group. I mean, I, I'm just gonna point out something, you know, how bad is it that you didn't know to communicate with Rachel? You know, as the emergency manager person, that's a bad thing. We need you to know Rachel. We need you to know her really, really well.
And I, I'm looking forward to getting to know her better. And I sent her an email, appreciating you. I know, she says she leave, and I said, good luck in our Dominican Republic. Sounds like fun. Okay. Yes, I appreciate that. I, I want to learn more about what the structure is. So thank you. I can follow the real soon as I know what they are.
Can I just say, like, being over volunteers, I think we need to be careful. I feel like Carrie and Erin and the people that are serving on this committee are putting a lot of time and a lot of work in, and we're sure beating them up tonight. Like, it's really hard to get good volunteers in our community, and I'm sitting here looking at a lot of them in this room who put in a lot of time and work. And I, I just think, you know, I also appreciate all the work that you've done. And I, I understand there was a miscommunication, and I understand there were toes stepped on and, and things, feelings hurt, but also, you know, we need to appreciate the time and the effort and what, what they're trying to do because volunteers are hard to come by, and we need them. That's what makes this community great. And so it just bothered me that you said, oh, I have thick skin. And I just think, you know, we need to also appreciate all of our volunteers because we need all of them. And so that's, that's just my, I just want to say that thank you for, I mean, you've done some good things for the council, you've given us great presentation, you're an awesome resource for our city, and so I think we need to appreciate that too.
Can I give you a heads up on something else?
Sure.
Which I'm not quite sure how, what my forum is to communicate with you, the things that I'm working on. Do I do it individually, or do I do it, and do I request time to talk to you during your council meetings?
Yeah, so if, if you're going a totally different direction with a proposal, then we need to schedule it as an agenda item. I mean, you can tease it out.
Not a different direction, just I'm taking the direction I have, and I'm building on it.
No, a different direction from the discussion tonight.
Yeah, so what we've got on the agenda has been noticed, we need to stay within...
Okay, then, then let it be known that I'm gonna talk to you guys about becoming independently reliant, self-reliant as a city from the county in the areas of communication and medical support, as far as for a true disaster, so.
Just, let's just put it on the agenda.
And, and Erin, too.
And fundraising.
You can always send to citycouncil@woodlandhills.ut.gov.
My ideas?
That'll come to all of us.
Oh.
And then with that, that can be kind of like, like, again, the way I kind of like to run a meeting is, if I can get the detail before the meeting, then I can read all of that, and then we only have to handle the questions during the meeting. So then you could come to the meeting, and then we could just handle the questions or whatever. And I think that's, that's a more productive use of time than trying to communicate all of your idea during a meeting, which your ideas may be pretty extensive, so it just may be an easy...
Plus, I like to, I like to research things. So if I get information ahead of time, I actually like to do a little digging before I get here and have to make a vote on things, so, so that's nice.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll cover that another time, but with regard to what we discussed here tonight, again, thanks.
Thank you.
And I, I think we, we, we've all learned some things, and I think that we're the better for it, and so I think that we're probably ready to move on to our next item, item number two. Okay, step on up.
The fire and EMS, it's on, fire and EMS has a, a command structure that's already in place. It's the way we're trained. It's a quasi-military type setup. And so I'm just gonna give you feedback from me. If we have an incident occur here, I'm not listening to any of you, except for maybe Doral, because of his, Craig and Rachel are gonna be the ones that are gonna be allocating us, assigning us, and making things happen. They may reach out to you, but those of us that are EMTs or firefighters and all the roles that we fulfill in the department here, we're not gonna give you guys the time of day per se unless we're instructed to do so. So because of the command structure that's in place in our chain of command, that is how we work. So just a clarification there, so you guys understand, we're gonna be looking at Craig for leadership, we're gonna be looking at Rachel for leadership. And then that may change if, if they involve somebody else at a different level. You guys remember the fire, you had your type one, type two, type three, all that stuff, that all figures into that situation, but that is the command structure we have, that's what we're gonna be listening to. I love what Erin's doing, and I, I appreciate Carrie. There's probably not anybody in this room that does more than Carrie, I'll be honest. You talk too much, but you do more than anybody, okay? And so hats off, and great respect for that. But just so you guys understand how that incident command structure works, it's how we train. When we do MCIs, when we do triage, it all follows that command structure that, that we're trained very heavily, and you guys, I think you, we do, we just train heavily in this stuff. So as much as we like you guys, you are not the ones we're gonna be looking to if something were really occurred. So just a heads up on that as well.
I don't even want to try to give you orders.
No, you don't.
I won't even try, don't worry.
The concept, it's lonely at the top, which you guys understand a little bit, definitely applies to these two as well as with, with what they do. So I love these guys, I appreciate them. We do things where there's a, there's a bond that takes place with us that I've never experienced in anything else I've done in my life, and we trust each other with our lives, we trust each other in very intense situations. Rachel and I run on Salem's ambulance one day a week. I mean, we see death in all forms and fashion, we see all sorts of situations. There's a bond that we have that you just can't get any other way. That is how we're set up. That's our command structure, that's our trust. And I love these guys, I have utmost confidence in them, and that's who we're gonna look to for our leadership as things take place. Well, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, well, I appreciate everyone's input, and again, I, I think that we, everyone feel comfortable with the direction, right? We can move forward. I'm talking to the council here.
Are you comfortable with me setting up the meetings for that public safety council with fire, EMS, law enforcement, emergency management once a month? That we, that Craig and I talked about before, okay?
Yeah.
I'll just coordinate that with them, we get that set up.
Okay. All right. Item two.
Wow, that was long number one.
Yeah, I will tell you.
Good idea.
Well, I, the mayor and I talked about that, and because of the county situation where they may need Emily once in a while, so I told the mayor that we'll, we'll try to get it worked out at least two weeks prior for the next month. So, I mean, two weeks, like halfway in the month to, for the next month, so that we will know it's probably most likely gonna be the first or the second Wednesday of every month for us to meet at the 8:30 before your, before your staff meetings. But it will just, we, for a while, we're gonna have to just kind of be a little flexible on that because of the schedules, as Peter told us in our meeting, he comes first, and, and we'll, we'll come second. And so she and I decided that we would just keep looking, but for this month, it will, for April, it will be April 12.
Well, and, and maybe what we can do is we can have a solid date and then make the exceptions the exception, instead of just having it lose. So, and we can talk more about that, but, but I, I, I think that, yeah, the calendar is, is a really good idea.
Then I'll coordinate with the others on this public safety meeting, I'll just coordinate individually with those three and let you know what day works for everybody.
Yeah, we can just put it on the calendar that way, there's no record, there's no this or that, or...
And that way, also during, it's in the daytime when, when they're already being paid to be here, and it will probably mostly be Rachel and I who have different schedules working it out with theirs, because they're gonna be here set times, we can just...
Okay. All right, very good. Chief, item two, spring chipping.
So you...
Your part might be.
Now, so what I'm gonna do is just, it's about chipper day, and it'll kind of piggyback on Emily, our lone individual from county, she's gonna be, they're working on flood mitigation. And that's why they're pulling all county resources into that to prepare for it. So chipper day, I talked with my guy down at county chipper crew, they're gonna give us the same two weeks chipping, like the last week in May, first week in June. It's tentative. So I've got, I've put a letter together, and I'll send it to each one of you guys, and it talks about not having anybody put any piles out, because there's a good possibility that we will not be chipped. All those resources will go to flooding. Now, if we get closer and we see that there's really not an imminent danger of flooding, and they feel pretty good about it, we'll ask residents to bring it out. So the good thing that's gonna be on our side is there's so much snow, so it's gonna be hard for them to get piles out early. And so that's why I want to get this out to them right away, to not put piles. We'll try to get creative and maybe do some dumpsters or something this year. I hate to, I hate to call it off altogether because our momentum is so good.
Chief, I put something in the newsletter today that just says, chipping day may be at the end of May, but look for more information to come, do not put anything in the road.
So I'll, I'll send, I'm gonna send this one out through Everbridge.
Right.
And I'll send it through all the channels, just, just because, just so we don't get, start getting this out. Now, our, our fire crew, I would like to be able to, to use them, but if there's an opportunity for them to be on a fire, I'd like for them to be on a fire. So...
The hard part is, this year, more than any other year, I've noticed a lot of breakage.
There's a ton of breakage.
Yeah.
So I think, so maybe if, if, and then, and then it brings up a good point, so maybe that's a creative strategy we get is say, hey, if you got down lambs and broken trees, let's put some dumpsters out, gather that, and, and then if there's room in your neighborhood, then you can cut and put in it or something. Yes, something, I, I, I don't know. I did write in there it'll be fluid, so we'll watch this. We are scheduled for the same eight days. We just, there's a possibility that they could just, yeah, be called the floods, and then I got piles sitting here getting in hot, and so the next month will tell us a lot. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on, on what I've learned about chipper.
That chipping plan you talk about, is it funded through a grant still, or?
Yeah, county's gonna cover us for the eight days.
Wow.
So when I should be able to get this year too, I'm planning on using, when my fire, when my fire crews come back between deployments, I want them doing some fuel projects in town for a week before we redeploy. Gives them a little break from doing the 16-hour days, and, you know, knocks them down to 10 hours a day, so.
You got a break, Greg and Brush?
Yeah.
And I should be able to use the state chipper still. Our state guys moved around, but I know the new guy that went in. And one of our county guys, I lost him, and he went to Forest Service, but I know the new guy now. So, yeah, as long as we, we keep some good relationships with them.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, amending Woodland Hills Plot A Lot 24 and approving a lot line adjustment. Chairman Franzen.
My main reason tonight is to inform you of this lot, lot line adjustment. Back in 2021, Nate Crowe, who'd be a future resident, he's here tonight, by the way, bought a piece of property and, and want to subdivide it. We, we've been following a procedure that is less correct than, than the procedure we should've been following in the city. People coming in and doing lot combining or lot division, we've been looking at those as subdivisions, and we, we shouldn't have been. There are already a subdivision in and of itself, wherever they are, they're part of a subdivision whenever in years past that was formed. So we've, in, in that process, we've added some requirements for the, the lot owner to do that were not necessary. So Nate is the first one that we've taken this in a little bit of a different direction. Our ordinance, following our ordinance, it allows the planning commission or the city council to approve a, a lot division or a lot combining without going through all the other processes, with certain requirements. It has to be a part of a subdivision already, and they have to do a meets and bounds description of the property, et cetera. So all that has been done, there's, there was a zone change a little over a year ago from a... There's, there was a zone change a little over a year ago from R12 to R11. And it fits, that came before the council and that fits within that area over there. So he's divided it in two different lots. One is 3.58 acres and the other is one acre. So it meets the requirements of, of the zone.
Did you say 3.5 and one?
Yes.
Okay.
The total piece was those two combined and then did the division.
Well, five eight, that.
Five eight, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I'm staring at it.
Yeah, I had the paper and I didn't bring it with me.
So from then to now, he's been getting the water right for that division, which has taken a lot of time. But the sub, the planning commission voted on this last year to approve it as we can do. And again, the council can do that as well. There doesn't require two votes, it can be one or the other. So we've, we've taken initiative and gone ahead and reviewed it and approved it. And the time will come when those, right now, there's no structure on either of those. But time will come when structures will be placed on those two lots. So I'm, again, informing you that all the work, the sub, the planning commission has approved that action. I just wanted to let you know to keep you abreast of that. There may be other ones in the future that have similar circumstances that we will treat the same way. But it's within the confines of our ordinance that, that we've done everything.
This isn't the same people that came last time to talk about the other one that's in a similar area.
Yeah, it's an R119.
Yeah, 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 okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Tiny different, yeah.
Because it's the same, almost the same area.
A little bit, yeah.
So are we still requiring water?
We are, yes. And that's, that's what most of the delay has been in working through that process to find a share, get it assigned to the city. And that's been completed. So a Mylar is done showing this division. That Mylar then will be filed with the county to show an amendment to the original plat that was filed showing these other two lots here now, so.
And the big distinction is that we're just not treating it as a subdivision, right? I mean, that's basically what.
Yep, it's not a subdivision.
Got you. Okay, any other comments?
I have no problem approving that. You know, that, you're more skilled at that than most of us.
If there are any issues or questionable stuff, then we'll bring it to the council. But they're pretty straightforward and we'll, we'll.
Thank you, Wayne. Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Okay, Mark, you've been so patient. Public Works Committee Recommendation of Priorities for the upcoming year.
Okay, now, this may take a while.
Well, if it takes longer than item one, you might have people walking out.
That was my bad sense of humor there. Okay, so during the last couple of months, the first part of the year, I gave a presentation on what the public works priorities were. It wasn't as involved financially as the mayor wanted it to be. So the mayor did ask us to get together, kind of reevaluate and try and bring some cost numbers before the committee or before the council to kind of help with the decision making. Now, that being said, we as a committee don't have, you know, we're not perfect to all the information that the city has and everything. So if I misspeak about something, please feel free to correct me because I'm not going to have a hundred percent accuracy on some of my numbers and assumptions, I guess. So, but anyway, while we were working at the committee meeting last, I think it was February 20, March 1st is, or, yeah, the first, it might have been March 1st. We, we talked about this. One of the big concerns we had is, you know, staff time to do all this. So the, the committee agreed to kind of divide some of these assignments or, you know, divide these priorities up into assignments so we can kind of help work with the staff and council as need be if, if we need to. So, excuse me, let me start with what we didn't address that we addressed in the past. What we did not address was the next phase of the water line. I think that's a big blip on everybody's radar already. And if it starts hemorrhaging water like the other half of the system did, it's going to be everybody's priority whether they want it to be or not. So we, we didn't talk about that. And we also did not discuss West Lofer anymore. That I think is also been addressed plenty. So we, we kind of left those two items off the discussion that we're on in the, in past priorities discussions. So what we did bring up, of course, was the new water tanks, the new city water tank. Previously, we had talked about tank maintenance on the old tanks. Since that, that time, the city council has improved an increase in the fire flow requirements, which in order to meet those fire requirements are going to re, you know, they increased the flow because of the larger structures within the city. This new requirement required an increase in water storage. So I know that you guys have met with, I think it's Corey Dieter of EFC Consulting, working with, with Ted on impact fees for a new water tank. So I think that that kind of on everybody's radar as well. I know that, I think he's given the council a presentation. One thing I wanted to reiterate about this because we, we did, you did want me to bring cost numbers back. I had a chance to look at the impact fee analysis on that. And I know there's some tweaking that needs to be done to it. But it did talk about the cost of a new tank being just slightly over a million dollars. What I think was also very clear in it is not all of that million dollars can be paid with impact fees. There's about a 22% deficit in the, in the existing system because of the new requirements. That will have to be paid for other ways. Typically, that becomes user rates. So at least 22% of that million dollars, probably more depending on growth, will have to be paid for out of user rate. So I think what, I just wanted to make sure, and I think you guys were all clear on that to begin with. I just wanted to reiterate that. So then the other thing we've been talking about, this has been on our, our list for a couple of years as well, is, you know, water rights updates.
Mark, can I just, on, on the water tank, there has been some, Craig mentioned that he had received some additional information. So we actually might, as far as the, the flow rates, there, there, there might be some updated information too.
I am aware of that, but I didn't think I was going to, because I'm.
Yeah, well, I, I, I probably shouldn't have brought it up because I can't speak to it.
I don't know exactly what it is, I didn't, yeah, but it sounds like there will be some changes.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then on the water rights, this is something Wayne has been working on, working closely with Corey over, over the last several years. And he's done a very good job of it. Riley Water completed a water rights report. I've got 2022 on my notes here, but I think it was 2020. And there was some recommended actions that needed to be done, including, you know, kind of consolidating water rights, re-appropriating the points of use and stuff like that. And the proposal that was brought to the city was slightly over $10,000. That was a couple of years ago. As far as I know, nothing has been done with that, you know, but we do have, you know, we do have to do, change applications and stuff, you know, that are required by state law. So we thought, you know, hey, might be a bad idea just to set up a water rights fund, whether you put five, $10,000 a year, whatever you can put in there so that when we need to take care of this, especially extensions of water rights, there's funds to do that. We don't have to start, oh, where are we going to get this money or that money? If it's already earmarked for that, that's, that's going to be, it's not a lot of money. But, you know, this is going to be a requirement, just, just, I don't know how many people are aware of this. We did have a lapse on one of our big water rights a few years ago. We were fortunate enough to get it back. We, we did lose our priority date and the state was under no obligation to give us that back. We're fortunate, I hate to see us go through that again because we're not paying attention.
Yeah, that's a very, very important aspect because there's water brokers all over ready to snatch those up. Now, so Chris, my question is to you then, if this is $3,000 to $5,000 a year, can that come from our water fund because it's water rights? Okay, just wanted to, I thought so.
No, so anyway, that, and again, I just want to say Wayne has been doing a great job keeping an eye on that ball. So we owe him a big debt on that one because, you know, and he, and he has agreed to continue doing so. So let's, let's support him on that. So we think, we felt that was, you know, one of the other priorities. I mean, there are a lot of priorities, but we just kind of narrowed it down to these five. And then the Broad Hollow well, now, we really haven't completed that well. We've got, most of the big items are finished. There are, you know, some small items that need to be taken care of, but there's always going to be that. But one big ticket item that needs to be considered and, and as we go forward with this is the three-phase power. We have a single-phase circuit in there that is maxed out to the current pump. We, we, we're at, you know, we're at the top limit of its available capacity, excuse me, drop my pencil. You know, when we need or when the need arises to install the new bigger pump, we will definitely have to upgrade the services because that's a 200 horsepower service. And we just, you know, we just don't have the capacity in our, in our power to do that. That is probably about $100,000 plus or minus. I mean, it may be less, but anyways, it's a big ticket item. Now, and again, I'm not pervy to the finances of this, but part of our job is to, to, you know, talk about the finances on this.
Is that something that would be done in a single instance? Or is that something that could be broken?
It could be done, it could be piecemealed if, if, I mean, if we get ahead of it and get it put in before we need it. Yeah, it can be piecemealed, conduits, then, you know, cable and then a transformer and then tying everything in, it could be done over the next two or three years. You know, one thing that, as I was reading the, the impact fee analysis the other day, it, it did notice that in the current well, there's a, there's an excess capacity that we can charge impact fees to new residents to buy into that. That, that's a plus, you know, it can help pay the bond. But it's possible, and I don't know where the money's already earmarked, it may be in other places, I don't know. But it's possible we could use some of that impact fee money to complete the well. You know, it's just something that we had money to do once and we didn't get it done. Now we're having to figure out how we're going to do it again. So, and I can help in any way possible. There's not a lot I can do, but I'd be more willing to help in any way that I can possibly help to do that. That was one of the assignments I got. So also on, on a note that, you know, I'm sure we're all aware of, we did, you know, hit with the, I guess, some 40% cost of $100,000 for the Maple Canyon well. That's, that's something we're also going to have to, we had no choice on that. So I'm, I'm sure that everybody's aware of that.
Have we gotten an update on the timing of that? It's, okay.
So we have to budget it for next year, right?
So city hasn't got a bill yet, apparently.
Yeah, okay.
Work's all done, huh?
Okay, so, and then this is one that the mayor and I talked about. He, he seemed pretty interested in it. And at least one resident brought this up at the meeting, the, the town hall meeting a couple of years ago, is, you know, is well monitoring, water level monitoring. We put this on the priority list from last year, a couple of years ago. We just feel it would be beneficial for the city to, to monitor the groundwater levels. Now, that being said, you know, I'm looking 20 years ahead of this. This is, there's going to be plenty of water for the next little while. I mean, it could be water here longer than I'm going to be here. But I'm thinking, you know, if, if a community doesn't look 20 years ahead, it's setting itself up for failure. I mean, that's just as simple as that. So I checked out, I, I, associate I worked with, Hugh Harlow, is a groundwater manager for Utah Geological Survey. I chatted with him a little bit and he's not aware of any studies that have been done in this, in this area. There's one older study done in the nineties that really involves Santa Quinn and Goshen. That's about as close. You know, the aquifer is like a giant reservoir underwater. And each area is kind of the drainage into that aquifer. What are drainage, how are drainage compares to the drainage of Provo or American Fork? We, we just don't really have answers to that. So, you know, a major water study, study, of course, is going to be very expensive and probably not in the budget at this time. But in the meantime, I think there's small steps we can take. And one of, one of those items was to, you know, we could look at purchasing a, a sounder, which is basically a tube you can, you can stick around, you can check the, the water levels. And we can, you know, we can track water levels around, do it in the winter, do it in the summer, do it when the wells are running and when not. It kind of gets some sort of an idea, see if we see any kind of a change that might say, hey, yeah, we may take a little closer look at that and may prove that, hey, we haven't got too serious of a problem here at this point. Again, minimal cost on that portion of it, about $1,500 for the, for the sounder. It's, it's an electronic sounder that would just has a data recorder on it and everything else that we could use. I'd be willing to work with staff again to assist with the design and the implementation of the data collection base. It's something I'd be willing to do, something we can get together and hopefully after, you know, two or three years. Would have been nice to know where we were last year compared to this year. It's a perfect example for a, for a delta change. So that, that's something that we felt was important, again, minimal cost on that. Another.
So where would that go? That would just.
It would just, it would sit in the truck. I mean, it could be sitting, it's only the size of, you know, a couple of these microphones put together. It's, it's a small container.
It doesn't go in the well itself?
It doesn't, no, you just, it's just a sonar. You just sit it over the top of the well and it sends a sonar signal down, measures the water depth, sends it back and tells you how much water you got. And then it'll record that data. So it gets, it's not a big, big item. You can put permanent ones in the well, but this would not be that case. Now, another item we, we talked about is sewer operations. Now, this, it got a little bit bigger in sewer operations. Yeah, right now, we're, we're, all our funding, as far as I know, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, we collect money and what money we collect for the sewer technically just goes to pay some. And we've left nothing in it for ourselves for any type of in-house or in-city maintenance, whether it be manholes, staff time for billing, accounting, and stuff like that. So we thought, you know, it'd be great if the city was to put together a line item and develop some sort of an operational procedure for that. So that there is some, you know, you got, somebody's got to pay for it. If it's not paid for out of sewer, it's going to be paid for out of somewhere else. So that, that was, we thought was important, that some sort of a sewer infrastructure budget line item would be good that, you know, we can adjust over the years as we figure out what we need. Now, also, we, we talked, as we talked about that, because we would be looking at some sort of an operational plan, that may not be a bad, basically call it an owner's manual for the city's infrastructure systems. We could look at, you know, not only the sewer system, but the water system, pressure lines and something like that. So, hey, if, you know, if something goes wrong, you can reference that. Oh, yeah, that, that's, that's here, it's supposed to be set like this. Last time it looked at was in and, you know, because, you know, we've got some pretty good institutional knowledge now, but we're not going to have that forever. And so I think now would be a good time to start in, building that institutional knowledge and converting it into an operations manual. So there would be minimal transition time if something were to come up that we needed, some new people learning this stuff. Not a lot of cost on that, but that would require significant staff time to do. Corbett and Ben have kind of decided to work together on, on the, you know, the sewer portion of that. Again, I could help out in any way possible for, for the rest of the plan. But it just, that would really require a lot of time from Corbett. That, you know, I know he's pretty busy already. So that would be just, again, another priority that we thought was important. Then another one, that, excuse me, my throat just cleared on me. Another one would be the safety. You know, currently in our, in our employment handbook, there's like a, a two-page policy, if it was that big about safety, you know, be careful, you know, do things in a safe manner. You know, you're really painting it with a, with a broad brush. It probably should be a little bit more involved in that. You know, it's something that, again, I had a favorite city attorney that I've worked with. His favorite statement was, "It's all about the liability." And I'm thinking the city's learning a little bit about the liability now. We need to have some sort of a policies and procedure in place that addresses safety and that, you know, the people that are involved will sign that saying, hey, I read and understand that. And not only does it protect the employee, which is obviously the most important thing, but it also protects the city and it's just the right thing to do. Again, not a lot of money involved, but some time. I think Utah Leaks the City in Town probably has a boilerplate that we could use and adjust on that. Again, like I said, currently it's a very small policy that probably wouldn't stand up if we had some liability issues on that. Okay, so that was kind of the, you know, the main, the main ideas. One thing that we haven't gotten in the past when these have been presented, and we would certainly appreciate it, is some feedback. We've been getting, you know, we've gotten zero feedback in the past. It would be nice to get some feedback. Hey, yeah, we, we looked at what you presented here, we talked about it, we thought, yeah, this is a good idea, but we don't have the money or, yeah, it's just a plain bad idea, we're not going to do it. Whatever, just some feedback would be nice as we talk about this.
Well, I'm going to give you some right now. I think this is awesome. I think, I mean, the water tank is one that, you know, that gives me some pause just because the need and also the expense. But I, I really appreciate that everything else, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do all these other things in this upcoming year. So I, I think that's, this is a great roadmap that you've given us, so thank you.
Good, any other questions?
I, I, I'm, I'd agree with just what the mayor said. I think that safety and all of them up above that are, are all legitimate and not hugely expensive.
We could have spent some money, but we just, we, we tried to take, you know, again, we're not, I'm not familiar with the budget other than I know it's tight.
I like those.
And quite honestly, I'll, I'll be as candid as I can on this. One of the things we did discuss was, you know, getting involved in the budget, which our ordinance has to do. But honestly, at least I feel like every time we talk about budget, we're trying to peek behind the curtain. And, you know, so that, that's something that, you know, if we need some help with, you know, some questions on that, we, we may have to ask some questions about the budget.
Fair enough.
So Mark, on that last one, safety, you still have Paul's name. And so he, are we still working with Paul on the committee?
Paul's on the committee, yeah.
Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure he hadn't fallen off someplace, but that's great.
When he resigned, when his term was up.
Yeah.
When he resigned, when his term was up, he agreed to stay on the.
Wonderful.
On the.
And then the second thing I wanted to know, do you want me to reach out to the league to see if they have a policy, or are you reaching out to them?
You meet them on a regular basis, don't you? Yeah, if you could do that, I'd love it. That's, you know, because, you know, I've got so much to do myself.
Well, your name's a lot of the time, so I think you're about to have more to do.
I think you volunteered for a couple of things in here.
Well, again, these are things that, you know, I have, have experience with, and so I can help out.
Perfect.
If there's anything in addition to this little part that you have right here that you want to send to me, is there anything other than this paragraph that you want me to forward then to the league? Or, I mean, with more details, or is it just this?
I mean, just ask them, say, hey, you know, we're looking at revamping our safety policy. I'd be polite, you know, I'd put it that way, we're revamping, we'll spin it that way.
Safety policy as it relates to public works?
Well, it could, that being said, it could include the fire department too, because it's probably going to be a lot of overlap on both of them. You know, AUDs or whatever the case might be, you know, that would be something, you know, that would just, the thing that jumped out at me there. So there could be some, you know, overlap with different departments.
Okay.
One more question. If the power goes out, can we pump water at the well?
We have a backup generator. Corbett's probably in a better position to answer that, Diane, but we do have a backup generator. And as last I heard, it's in service and we could.
Oh, it's ready to go? I see a.
Yeah, it takes two or three hours to get it going.
Well, I'm glad we're that close, because.
But I think what we've seen bottom line is if we have an emergency, he'll get the well, the pump running before we run out of power, run out of water.
Glad to hear that, unless there's a fire.
Thank you, Mark, that was very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, that was easy, right?
I want that to work.
Yep, no, that gets a gold star. Okay, item five, inter-local cooperation agreement between Utah County and the city of Woodland Hills for the administration of the 2023 municipal election. Jody Stones. Yeah, you should know this drill.
So I'll direct your attention to page eight of the agreement, and that's Exhibit A. On there, they give a scope of work, and that would be what the city would be responsible for and what the county would be responsible for.
Page eight.
Exhibit A. Yep. So we would be responsible for the candidate filing, financial disclosures, publishing it in the city as required, keeping the candidates who are running informed, examining the election ballots, putting the links on our website for everyone, and making sure the formats are all good. The county would take care of most everything else. Now, the big decision you as a council are going to have to make between now and April 25th is, do you want to continue with the pilot program of ranked choice voting, where it does away with a primary election? Or do you want to go back to the old format? You would have a primary election only if you had more than six individuals filing for candidacy, because there are three seats up this year. There is some cost savings if you choose not to have a primary. The time period, though, for.
A few thousand dollars, right?
It's about twenty, on the very last page on Exhibit B, it's about a twenty-five hundred dollar cost savings.
For the ranked choice.
So, a pro for ranked choice voting is, I liked when we were campaigning that we supported each other and that because you're ranked, you can't say something nasty about your opponent. Like, you can, but you shouldn't. I felt like it discouraged.
We became friends, that's what.
Yeah.
That was good.
And we supported each other, and you could say, if I don't get your first vote, can I get your second vote? So I really liked that about it. That was the big positive.
So, just because I think the discussion around ranked choice voting is a longer discussion than this.
Yeah.
Could we get that scheduled in the next couple of meetings so that we could have that discussion? I do think.
As long as nobody minds a seven-hour meeting.
You know, we had originally set April 11th as being a budget meeting. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, we've had other requests come up to be held on April 11th, and that meeting is.
Is already pretty booked.
Is going really long, but you have to make a decision by your April 25th. So I don't see that you have a choice.
Tuesday's already killed anyway.
If. I don't see that we can't, I don't see that you should discuss it.
That's just the hard part about having the budget discussion on a regular night when you have so much other stuff.
I would say is, the way the county handled ranked choice voting.
That was going to be my second point.
Was horrible. And I know you attended that meeting on Friday, and I attended virtually. And to me, that was just a bunch of paid individuals spouting what their opinion was on ranked choice voting.
Well, the thing that was interesting about that meeting for me was that the Utah County guy was like, I hate ranked choice voting, which was kind of interesting to listen to.
Yeah, the old clerk.
Huh, interesting. So I, but I came away with the same feeling you did. It was, there was a lot of pros, not very many cons. I agree with your pro. I think that there are two really big pros. What you just mentioned is one, and then the cheaper, well, I'm going to mention three. The cheaper, you only have to run one election as opposed to two. And there's kind of a corollary to that in that it shortens the campaigning time. So you're not having to campaign in June as well as in September. And I think that's a benefit. I think all of us would probably like short campaign time.
And if something's going to be negative, there's less time for negativity to.
Now, having said that, here's the cons that I came away with. One, when you're running multi-seat elections, it's a little fuzzy. And it's fuzzy from the mathematics standpoint, it's very confusing from the voter standpoint. I think multi-seats elections aren't really a great use of ranked choice voting. And then, again, kind of a corollary to that is just, I think plurality voting, that's the term they use for just voting one, you know, for one candidate. We've been doing that since elementary school, and so we all kind of get it. Whereas ranked choice voting, you kind of have to wrap your head around it a little bit. It maybe requires a little bit more than the average person wants to put into it mentally.
And in our, in our election, because that was our only ranked choice voting, it seems like there was one candidate, and I don't remember who it was, but that was behind until they got the second-place votes, and then they moved ahead. And that's really confusing for the citizens to understand.
And that was.
Who was that, was that?
The county gave us results that they said were, you know.
Really great.
Really, yeah, they said, "We are confident in these results we've given. You can go ahead and tell your residents that this is the way it is." And I said, "So how many ballots have you counted?" And they had counted like three hundred. And I said, "How can you be confident when we have over a thousand ballots?" And they said, "No, we're good, this would never go the other way." And I said, "I'll bet you it could."
We have a high voter turnout, they're used to, this is a certain percentage of overall voters, this is how it will go, but Woodland Hills has a higher voter turnout than the rest of the county, and so it did switch.
And so we explained that to them, we went down there probably two days in a row, and I said, "How many do you have?" "Well, we're still, it's not changed." "How many ballots have you counted?" "Well, we've counted four hundred." "Nope, I guarantee you." And in the end, yeah, they had to eat crow, I guess, a little bit. But, you know, the decision on whether or not you want to do ranked choice voting is totally in your hands.
But it's not a decision we need to make tonight, right? I mean, that's not, we're not.
You are going to have to decide when you want to have that discussion.
But we have to vote on it before the 28th.
And, right, and you don't even have to vote on whether or not you want to accept this agreement yet either. You can wait, we can do it all at the same time. I just thought I'd put it out there.
I did like one of the comments that Doral had gathered, though, that just said that, like, for like a city council election, you know, that ranked choice voting was a good.
They loved it in Heber City.
Yeah, from Heber.
And Moab, one guy said, "I just, here's, he was good, but I, they were opposed to it." Or at least he was in Moab, so I was surprised I got conflicting.
And remember, it's only for municipal elections, it's not the whole program from the state. It can't go for any partisan elections.
Thank God, Jody.
Well, and just so you know, Heber City was strongly represented at that meeting on Friday.
Oh.
And they are extremely pro, for honestly the reasons that you mentioned. I think the, kind of the, being able to help the tone be a little bit less contentious.
We campaigned together, and we were competing against each other, but we did, you know, we had town hall, not town hall meetings, but we had meetings like in homes and stuff together and supported each other because of the type of election that it was. So I thought we supported each other.
I think the residents appreciated that part about being able to go to a meeting and just meet people and hear what they're saying without it being negative.
Together, and it was positive, and I really liked that. I liked that aspect.
So I think, here's the one comment that I came away from that meeting that I 100% agreed with. There is no perfect voting mechanism. And each voting mechanism has its pluses and its minuses. Plurality voting has definite minuses, but it also has pluses.
But I did, my con is that I think it's confusing when you start getting the, this person is here, oh, but now they're here after the second vote. You know what I'm saying, it's very confusing how that rolls out.
For me, I think if the county can give the results better, I think it would have been a much, much better experience.
They're learning.
Right, because, you know, as Brent and I were running against each other, I was, in the preliminary, I was third and got kicked out of the race. And then by the time they finally got all the ballots counted, there was a five percent swing between the mayor and I. Like, they weren't even close. And so, and then it caused a backlash afterwards, because it was all also during, you know, the presidential voter fraud whole thing. And so it just, it had, you know, kind of federal climate in our little election, and it just was a little out of control, and I think the county could have cleaned that up a lot better. So if the county can get that all squared away, I think it probably makes sense, but.
If you had to decide today, Jody, do you have an opinion? But we won't hear that, will we, until they handle the results?
There, I'll also, again, just repeating things I heard at the meeting. There are some severe concerns, and I think they're legitimate, about statewide offices and running those as ranked choice. Because that now means that the county essentially just collects the ballots, but then sends the actual, all the votes up to the state, and then the state has to then run the calculations.
They're running paper to the state, or the state is that running the calculations?
Not paper, but, you know, they're having to. The ranked choice voting forces you to do the calculations as a batch. You can't do it district by district.
Yeah.
Because you can't like say, oh, well, in our district, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Charlie Brown won, and then in another district, it was Snoopy. You have to say, in this district, here's all the different things.
Yeah.
So anyway, it's kind of hard to run. It'll be interesting to see, because the state, I think, really wants to do a ranked choice voting for the state.
I don't, I don't care that that's going to be a very popular thing. There's a couple of people who are pushing it, but most of them are saying, "We're okay on the municipal level, but we don't want it for others." And you never know, though.
Right.
It would be interesting.
Chew on it, well, so we can probably, unless anybody wants to vote on this agreement tonight, I would say we can tie the two together, but give it some thought. And then I guess on the 11th, we will make that call. All right, thank you, Jody. All right, item six, West Loper Drive update, Ted Mickelson. Thank you.
Oh, man.
We talked about this, no? Be quick.
Any questions, let's go to work. No, so I don't know if we have any really big updates. We're still gathering information to put together the level of effort it's going to take to design it. Reached out to our previous city engineers, because we've researched through the files they sent us. We don't have everything we need yet. Just waiting on some information from them, and then we can figure out what it's going to take to finish the design. More information we get from them, the less level of effort it takes us, which translates to money for you. So we're trying to get as much as we can from them. But hopefully we'll get that soon, because if it's a project we want to do this year, we should be getting underway fairly quickly.
Is there anything that we can do to help in getting that information?
If I don't hear back from them, maybe tomorrow or something, we'll see if maybe Corbett or something can help get up. But, yeah. And just a side note, we're also working on, from the city engineering aspect, there were some house bills that significantly impact cities, and we're putting together a summary of some of what those are and what they mean.
Will they impact this project?
Uh, no, not this project, but just cities in general, so.
Okay, great. Any questions for Ted? I was easy. Thank you.
I'm easy.
Okay, update recycling and solid waste RFP, Chris Helvey.
Yeah.
In the flesh.
In person. Wow.
Chris, it's good to see you.
Wait, we need a little picture of like.
Yeah, where's the palm tree?
So I've been working with the State of Utah Department. They have some attorneys and other people who are.
Look at me.
They have some attorneys and other people that are professionals at helping write the RFPs. And I was talking with them today, we're trying to get the finalized RFP advertised, but it's becoming kind of a big behemoth project for something that only a handful of people in the state are going to be able to bid on. So we're kind of going back to the drawing board. She, I asked her if there was something that was a little more, you know, a request for information, a request for proposal, I mean, quest for information. She's sending back another condensed version of the RFP that's going to be a lot smaller. And so I was just looking that up right now, she sent it this afternoon.
So instead of an RFP, an RFI?
It'll still be an RFP, but it'll be condensed version without going into a lot of great details on, you know, they're going to pick up garbage, they're going to pick up collection, deliver it to Springville. I mean, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry. It's not like we're having to do engineering specs. You're going to have to build a building to a certain degree or do roads with certain slants and that kind of stuff. So hopefully by Friday, we'll be able to have something Monday at the latest. So we're thinking in the RFP process, we'll have the bids back by about April 16th-ish, and then we can open them up at the council meeting on the 27th, I think it's 27th or, what day? 25th. Or you can have a committee do it and open them up, and we can just go low bid. However you guys want to do that.
Are there two entities bidding?
Could be multiple. So I just know, you know, there's Republican ACE and Waste Management.
Oh, I just thought there was two.
So there's a couple. And frankly, it'll just be open for whoever has the ability to service us.
So the decision that, so the options before the council now, then, is?
Do you guys want to open them in the council meeting on the 25th and do it as a public? Or do you just want to have a committee open it and just goes to low bid?
Okay, so that's something we could decide tonight, right, or no, maybe?
What? Okay. Results are still the same, so.
So just, what, does anyone have a particular viewpoint on that? Viewpoint on this that you would want, or should we just have it as part of the council? I mean, if we, if we want to just go with the lowest bid, then that's, uh.
Do we have to go with just the lowest bid or can we have perspectives on?
We could do perspectives, but that opens the RFP backup to something bigger and going through qualifications and scoring it a certain way.
Okay, cause that's what I nor- normally hear when we do an RFP, you have the scoring there. Because there might be things that we want that they give back a lowest bid. It might not cover everything.
So the, the biggest thing typically has been a four-wheel drive garbage truck.
Yeah, to get up there.
I don't, I don't recall the use of that garbage truck in a long time, the four-wheel drive one.
Oh.
And in talking with Waste Management, our roads are clear enough that they've been able to get up and do it. So.
So because we're too awesome, they're not meeting their contract? So. So I, I, I just will throw out there that the track record of who we're using is strong with me. They've done a good job. In, in all, well, Jody fields the calls, but in, in, in my purview, they, they're, they're doing really good.
They're really responsive, but we have, we've had them for a while and they've gone through a couple of contracts. They've won a couple of contract cycles. Um, but.
And I think they were a little company when we were looking at going house. I think they, you know, they, they allowed us to consider that. And I thought that was.
They've been great. I, I think a good, you know, competition. I think somebody would need to significant, personally, I think somebody would significantly need to beat Waste Management for us to not stay with them.
Yeah.
Because there is some logistics and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Chris, but I'd assume that there are some logistics that would take place if we flipped to say Republic. We've got a lot of garbage cans that'll have to be collected and flipped and fixed and changed over to the others and I don't know what the costs are to that process.
Being the RFP.
You know, and so I think for Republic, for instance, for example, to win this bid. They would really need to win it. I'm really hoping it just comes down to Waste Management tightening their belt a little bit to continue the relationship.
Well, and also the point of the fight, of the, um, snow plowing, right? Because what if there is a day where it's happening and there's a snowstorm and we're not keeping up as quite as much as we try to? I mean, we're awesome about that, but we wouldn't want a company that just then gives us the low bid. And then oops, we can't get up the hill and they're sliding around on wooden hills drives. So that is an advantage for Waste Management. They know our roads.
We had to go to dumpsters and then everybody can appreciate.
We, that's what we used to do. Ah, that was a terrible thing, right? Dumpsters at the mailboxes.
Perfect. So Salem could use them. So. A good, solid hit with a blade and, yeah. And, and the garbage is probably not even visible. It's up in the trees.
It is empty right away.
So Chris, I, 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 just to make sure I'm clear then, so that sounds like we, if, if, if we want, if we're leaning toward Waste Management. We need to have it as a council decision, right? We can't just take the lowest bid because it is possible that the other provider will come in lower. So we, we don't want that. So is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Get the bids, not only the lowest bid, but they have, and I don't know if you guys want to separate out. Sorry, I had a little cancer frozen off. We want the, do we want to not include the, the cans? Cause that's kind of a disadvantage for Waste Management because they already have the cans here versus everybody else. So maybe we have that separate, um, because nobody's going to be able to beat Waste Management on a price if everybody has kind of the cans.
Okay.
So we disaggregate that out and just, so we know what the cost is going to be, or if they're going to roll that into their price. You know, if it's fifteen dollars a home, then is that be the can or not? Or would it be nineteen dollars a home with the can? There is one company called Ace, Ace Waste. That has a state contract right now that's posted. We could choose them without going to RFP. But I believe the first can was around nineteen dollars to pick up and we're not paying for it.
So judging from what you've heard tonight, what do you recommend?
So I recommend with the, our, the shortened version of the RFP, let's get the bids in, let's separate out the cans, let's get the true low costs on there.
Okay, but not do the committee option that you were talking.
I just do, it's gonna, I think it should be relatively easy.
Okay, so the eleventh then is that, or I mean, the, the twenty fifth?
Yeah.
Jody, got that? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
And you're on next to talk about cameras, so you might as well go.
Uh, or we can have, uh, Corbin come up and give his, cause it's, it's the two of you together. So Corbin, if you want to come up and then we'll let Chris give his piece on the camera update. You look like you were caught by surprise with this invitation.
What, uh, I don't know where we're at as far as the RFP.
Okay, I, I can offer some information there. So based on, uh, what Chris had, had gathered. And I can't remember the, the lady's name. Maybe Jody can help me, maybe not. But we have, so we, we have to go back, back to square one on the cameras. We've got.
That was from the state.
Yeah, so we've got to do a, a new RFP for the cameras. And then Corbin has found, uh, at least one provider. Um, and so the reason I wanted to talk about this is because I, I, I think that we've reached a point where we need to just cancel. The contract with the existing provider and move forward with, uh, just the whole new.
Can we get the money back?
Uh, yeah, uh, Chris said that we should be able to. There may be some restocking fees or some small associated fees.
Cause they haven't performed, like, to the contract in a timely manner.
I, I.
I would be pretty ticked if we have any fee from them.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I mean, how long has this dragged on? And I know we had some, uh, internet issues and some things, but still.
Well, we, we did, but we didn't, right? There were only two locations that had internet issues. The rest of the locations all had internet, could have been installed. And we could have been up and operational years ago.
Or at the least they could have gotten the cameras already.
Yeah, well, and, and, you know, I'm not making excuses for anybody, but I do understand that there were some supply chain issues and, and so. But it's neither here nor there. I mean, we are where we are. We're, we're gonna start at this new starting point, but we do have to go out for RFP. So what I wanted to make sure was that, Corbin, you haven't said a word. Yeah, you don't. And so I, what I would like is, um, the council's approval to basically. Uh, fully cancel the existing contract i- if it doesn't already do so by default. Given the time that has elapsed and then move forward with a new RFP and, uh, get this thing moving forward. And then I know Corbin's got some comments as to what we're looking for in terms of the cameras and some suggestions. But, okay, so that's kind of my take.
Explain Nikki's email then, from the state. Did you explain the email from the state? Is that what you were?
Probably not very well.
Oh, well, you did, okay.
But, uh, do you have any, uh, thing that you were going to say about it? Why don't you go ahead?
Just real quick, it's not, um, so there's, there's some culpability on the side of the, the vendor. And there's also culpability inside of the city. The city, it took us about eight months to twelve months to get the actual internet put to each of the locations. There was some confusion on a couple of the contracts that we had with, with, um, Utopia. So, and then supply chain issues. So that's, that's been kind of a, a challenge. But if there's another company, um, that has the cameras in stock and ready to go, that might be some, a better option for this, for the city to look at. Also, the state had indicated that there are some people on the RFP, the, the pre-bid process. If, if we can look under the purchasing side of the state that already have bid this out, we might not even have to go to form RFP.
And I don't know, Corbin, if you have looked at any of those providers?
I haven't. Nope.
I, I haven't looked at it. I mean, just see who they are.
Hey, I mean, I think that is an exercise worth doing. The RFP. And, and you know, when it comes to, you know, whatever, uh, responsibility we have under. Who's the provider again? It's, uh.
Classroom Smarts.
Classroom Smarts, yeah. I, I don't know, you know, what our arguable responsibilities are in that contract. I'm hoping it is nominal, if it's anything, but, you know, obviously if it starts to come in too much, then we have to start looking at our legal options. Which I don't want to do. And so, uh, let's, let's keep our fingers crossed.
So I can put a formal request and we did put about fifteen thousand dollars down for down payments. I'll make a formal request to have that money returned.
Right.
Now, they may hold that until they find out for sure if there's restocking fees or anything. But I'll keep you guys all abreast of what's going on.
How would it be restocked if it was never given to us?
He's got most of the cameras in stock. He's waiting for the PTC cameras right now.
They're in stock for them, but they were never delivered to us.
Correct. Yep.
I mean, why would that be ever stopped? I feel like it's a breach of contract.
Well, I mean, we got, we got to weigh the costs of all these things, but, but we don't know what number.
Let's just see what, that might not be anything.
Okay, um, so Corbin, do you have anything that you want to add with respect to the nature of the surface that you recommend? I know you sent an email that summed up, well, I thought, uh, the, uh, you know, the nature of the bid you got. And, and you and I spoke that we just want to make sure that these guys are all shovel-ready. Anybody that we hire is, you know, we're not just putting ourselves in the exact same position that we were before. And now we're just in a longer line at the grocery store.
Well, the, the guy from ICS, ICS is Industrial Camera Systems. Uh, he's four weeks out for install.
That's like, in four weeks, we could have cameras up and running.
Once you decide, he's four weeks out.
All right.
Sounds great. And, and we're going to get the prices on those.
We, that's what he sent out earlier.
Okay.
I mean, again, that's, uh, uh, there are still some questions. Doral, do you know anything about the camera? The camera down in the mailboxes? It's, it's.
Oh, the, the Utopia one?
The fire one?
Yeah.
Is it Utopia, Jody, or?
Is it the dual cameras?
Yeah.
Yeah. He has it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, BYU did it with.
I've assumed it's still operational.
Jody tried to get on it. Jody tried to get on it.
They might stop it until fire season.
Oh.
We'd have to double check and see. Cause it, it has the heat infrared on it to detect fire.
They've never told us.
Sandy's a lot hotter than that.
Huh. That's a good question, Cole. I'll find out.
We can email Roger.
Okay.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, would you? You have a relationship.
But I, uh, when I talk to the guy from ICS, he can incorporate that camera into our stuff.
Cool.
If, if he can get the feed or the IP, get it working, get it working. Well, we have the IP address, but it doesn't work. So it needs to be working.
Yeah.
And then he can, he can tie it in. If that's, if that's the way you guys go.
Cool.
That's a cool camera.
All right, great. Well, if no other questions, thanks to both of you.
Chris is next though.
You're next.
That's what happens when you come in person.
I didn't read those.
She puts you in order so that you can just have to worry about getting up to the mic once.
Oh, sorry, I sent you guys an email. Jody had found an error in the, um, the check approval. So I sent you guys an email with, um, an updated check approval.
Oh.
But that was a twenty-three, the financials are kind of in flux right now because we are, not flat, in flux, sorry. We just voted on, you guys had just voted on the updated financials in January, February. And so the March ones will be a little more relevant with the changes that, that are going to show up on there. We are working on twenty twenty-four budget also. Just throw that in there. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow with the staff to talk about wants and needs. And, um, our needs are always greater than money, so.
All right. Any questions for Chris on that item?
Just that is the corrections that Jody found.
Yeah, so I sent you a, a new resolution.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, now you can sit down.
Are you sure?
Well.
City budgetary items.
City budgetary items, but I don't know if there's anything that nobody's mentioned anything, like Chris said.
So we have the meeting on the eleventh. We'll go through the, tomorrow with the staff, then the mayor and I will get together. He'll propose the budget and then get it out to you guys hopefully in the next week or so.
Finance committee's meeting in the middle of there somewhere too.
That's, that's where it's going to go first.
Yeah, and that's why we did the meeting tomorrow, so that we should have enough time.
And I already sent you my stuff.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris.
I'll, I'll do that.
All right. Good seeing you, Chris. Update city grants, UDOT.
Just a second, I'm writing myself a note for Chris. Um, so with that grant, I just wanted to make everybody aware. Um, the mayor reached out to see if, uh, we might be able to use some of the grants, uh, money for a different purpose. American Legal Publishing, which we have been using for codification. Our agreement is up with them and, and we were looking to see if we might be able to use some of this money. Uh, to change services to Civic Link. Um, I called the, um, person who manages that grant and they said, no, that this, this didn't count. Uh, there's a little bit of discrepancy with, with that. He, he, I read him the, the mayor's email exactly. And, um, they, I was told that it, it, that didn't count towards using that grant. But, um, I will double check on that just to be sure. But that's the only thing happening there. Um, Ted, I haven't heard on if there's, oh, he already left. Uh, Ted and I have been looking to see if there's any water grants that are available to go against our ARPA funds. So far, nothing is rising to the top that we fit in. There's some for other communities for different things. Like Aquifer, uh, what do they call that? Recharge and we don't need that. And so we were going to use it for our water project to keep going on phase two of our water project. And so far, we haven't seen anything that we fit into, but we have time.
Great, thank you. Um, Doral, anything on fire? I do. Uh, there's a slim chance. In other words, we probably won't get the grant that would replace our SCBA's that Craig was talking about. It was to the tube of about two hundred grand. And so he has found a fire department up in North Salt Lake. I think it's a Leighton or something. Maybe that's, I don't know where Leighton is. But anyway, they have a bunch of old equipment that they are going to replace. And that equipment would do us through NFPA standards through two thousand twenty-six. So he's looking at that and they have quite a few systems. They're a big department. So we're hoping we might be included in getting a chunk of that, but we don't know the price yet. So that's up in the air right now. But it's a positive find. Yeah. That there's equipment that'll get us by. Yeah. But I'm glad. We'll see. Yeah, there's, there's another choice coming. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Janet.
So, um, Sherry got the grant submitted for PTR. And it was, if you remember, it's just a small grant. It's only about five grand, but she did hear back. It was accepted. It was perfect.
Wow.
And. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not, not, we didn't get it yet, but everything looked good. Everything was very positive and it fit the criteria really well. So, sounds really good. Really good chance to get it, so.
Excellent.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you. Mayor's ice skating rink coming up. Are we, are we going to call it that?
This is just a bench.
I know.
This is some benches, some signs. Just a few things for the switchback.
Perfect. Very cool. Thank you. Uh, city council reports. Council member Hilliard.
So we just had a board meeting, um, with the Utah Valley Solid Waste District. Um, and I've talked with, uh, Chris a little bit, or we've texted back and forth that there will be rate increases, kind of. Um, when it comes to recycling and then also just garbage. Um, and so I've gotten those numbers over to Chris, but as Chris and I were talking, it'll also then slightly depend on what our. So the rates won't change per what the RFP for garbage collection does. But garbage collection will then, plus these rate increases from the transfer station will help us better refine out what our rates are. And what we need to, if we need to look at raising those per our residents.
Right.
Um, currently, we subsidize, uh, recycle in the city.
To the tune of how much?
To the tune of more than one dollar.
Fair enough.
But I just think, you know what, we should probably charge what it costs us for the sake of, and frankly, that's what we're pushing the board, the transfer station. To do as well, because they're subsidizing recycle also. So one thing that's interesting about recycle is, is right now recycling costs the transfer station. One hundred dollars a ton to send it to the Waste Management Recycling Plant. Or, I say this, or as a, we're not doing this, but or we could send that same ton. To our landfill, the new aura, new era plant for ten dollars. But we're still sending it to Waste Management. So it costs the transfer station exponentially more to recycle. Because it makes us all feel really warm and fuzzy inside. Um, but what we're looking at to doing in the transfer station side of things is potentially put a, creating a website. That could communicate, this is just a spitball brainstorming right now activity, but that will then dictate, hey. These are the types of things we should be putting in our recycling bin this month. Because those are the commodities that actually can be sold.
Cool.
Instead of everything that's recyclable in, that then gets us charged so much from the transfer station to Waste Management's recycling plant. So we're looking at seeing if we can't drive those costs down, and that's why I'm bringing it up, is we potentially could not have to raise our recycling rates. As much if we're able to implement something like that and the programs then grasp and implement it on our end from our residents. So it'll be a, a multifaceted variable approach, but it may help. But something to think about is we men, we will most likely need to raise our, our rates from garbage to our residents.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that update. Uh, Councilmember Kinnison.
I'm going to stare at Ben while I say this. We reached out to our Board of Director, nine-one-one central friends, and they will be here on May sixth for the expo. So they want to talk about, um, two things. They want to talk about texting, nine-one-one texting, how it works, get more residents to use it, to be aware of it, for one thing. And the second thing they're probably going to display or talk about is the new system they're installing, what it allows for, such as video from the scene through the dispatch to our responders. So I hope they have some sort of demo for that, but anyway, they'll be here. Carrie, that's for your information too. So that's kind of positive.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Lund.
Um, I don't have much to report, nothing crazy going on, um, at the animal shelter. We do have the licensing clinic coming up. I don't know the exact date, but I'll figure it out, let everyone know. Um, and we'll get that going again. Jody reminded me of that tonight. Thanks, Jody. I was thinking I didn't have any events until the expo or any, you know, to worry about, but.
Well, if there are a bunch of rabid dogs running around.
It'll be my fault. We'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Those are just Janet's rabid dogs running around.
Yeah, right.
Just mine. Hey, mine were walking over the fence. Can we talk about the snow?
Good reflection.
They really did, they really walked.
Blame it on something.
We, we, we believe you.
Yeah, we do. I saw Dan, I saw Dan.
My neighbor walked my dogs home one day last week. Cause they've gotten.
I'm glad they're all safe. At least they were when you left. Right? Okay.
We dug a trench.
Yeah, I saw Dan digging, yeah.
Yeah, he was digging.
That's pretty funny.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Malcovich.
Okay, first I wanted to tell you that on March sixteenth, um, the Utah Lake Commission was dissolved officially on that date, so, uh, we no longer are a member of that, um, organization. They restructured it last year in the legislative session to the Utah Lake Authority. And there are specific people who are going to be serving on the authority. Mostly it's the cities who have lakefront property as well as some statewide, um, agencies and from the governor's office and, and elsewhere that will be sitting on that eight, that authority board now. So our, our time was, we were thanked for that service. Uh, I served on that for the last eight years and it was a privilege to do so and I'll, I'll miss doing that. Legislatively, there was a legislative wrap-up. There were over five hundred bills that were introduced that had an impact to cities. Two hundred and forty-four of those actually got out of committee where they could be considered and a hundred and fifty-two of those passed. So eighty-two of the bills, we, we stopped. So that was a pretty good win for, for cities. Um, we, there's another thing I wanted to tell you on that was there was a, um, quite a few things that will impact this. Some of them go into effect the first of May. Some go into effect the first of July. Some will go in effect next year. So it's just going to be gradual on, on those legislative updates. I'm pretty sure they'll talk about it at the league meetings in St. George to give us a little bit more of a update on, on what they're doing. Um, there were basically what we decided, four key themes for the season, uh, for the session, which was, one, we really do have a year-round legislator, legislature, because they meet every, they meet on the inter-meetings. The inter-meetings will start on April twelfth and that basically means for us, the legislative session starts in terms of what do we want to make happen or, or stop. Um, the other theme was the state had a surplus, but cities do not. So although they kept thinking, we have a surplus, we have a surplus, we can do all this stuff, we don't have a surplus. And so we did an aggregate of, um, all of the bills that they put out there and how much it would cost cities. And we have requested that the league put together a little pamphlet that we can give to our legislators to let them know that even though your bill only had this much and this guy's bill had that much, overall, it was a huge financial burden or could have been. And so they're going to put that out so that legislators are a little bit aware of that. Um.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, as soon as they put it out. I think they'll give it to us at the meetings.
Anxious to see you.
Um, also, we tried to really, um, stress the theme of partnering with the local government to plan for growth. Not just come in and be the bulldogs and say, you guys have to do this, but there was a lot of, uh, towards the end, there was a lot of goodness that came in that partnering. And so we want to continue that on with our legislators. Um, and then, um, also, there's a bunch of transportation takeaways, um, some money that was given in, um, that we have the, we might have the ability to have some transportation funding. I know that we've kind of said we might take off the idea of a road fee, but, um, there's some more things that have come to light since then that it might actually be beneficial to us. But we need to, we'll get some more information on that.
Like some possible money there?
Yeah.
That the state would match?
That there could be some money that they may match or they may just redirect some funds from one place to another so that it actually is beneficial to us.
Okay.
So those are things that we're kind of just working on, but I'm excited that we're all going together to those meetings and we'll be able to do some breakout sessions as well as, um, in, you know, overall presentations, but those breakout sessions, it might be good for us to kind of look at the, um, at the agendas and make sure that we've divided up so that we can get as mo- most, uh, information out to share with each other.
And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm missing that meeting in St. George.
Okay.
Oh, too bad.
Yeah, I got, I got serious family. I'll share with you.
But we remember them from last.
No, don't talk about me when I'm not there. Talk about him, he's the.
I think if Dave's there, we'll have to fill him in.
And we, uh, find some of the skeletons in Dave's closet.
Yeah.
Cause I have so many.
Get ready to share.
Um, Jody, just a question for you, um, on that. I received an email about registering for that conference. Do we need to register for it or have you already done that? Okay, thank you.
Well.
Hey.
Glamping.
I just want your tent. Okay, thanks.
I insist on a yurt. Okay, uh, Councilmember, thanks, Carrie. Councilmember Pratt.
Yeah, the, the, they haven't met, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, perfect. Uh, on, on mag and cog for me, uh, there was an MPO, uh, meeting this past week. There was some money, um, it, it's, I'll be perfectly candid, I'm not exactly clear where it is, but Woodland Hills Drive and eleven two hundred, there is, there are some resources that are advancing, uh, for those roads, but I don't think it's actually shovel ready, so, um, I don't have anything else.
They basically want to widen that to go between us and Elk Bridge to a wider road is what I got.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would assume that's to be the case, but as far as the advancing of the phasing, there, there was an advance, um, but it doesn't sound like construction is actually going to commence. It's just, it's moving forward in the process, so that's it.
Is he on SESD?
Oh, uh, no, we haven't met since the last time we had our meeting, I don't believe.
They've been throwing really big parties with all the additional money.
I know, I, uh, roll up in my Bentley.
Yeah.
Yeah, i- if only. Okay, uh, upcoming agenda items, please, please know.
Please know.
I've got about six to add.
Okay, uh, but if there are any pressing things, certainly we can discuss them. All right. Well then, let's adjourn the work session and reconvene at eight. No, I, I'm going to go watch some TV. All right, we'll call this meeting to order and, uh, commence our city council meeting. Um, Councilmember Hilliard, could we ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilmember Platt, Pratt, will you offer the invocation?
Physical therapy, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, please arise.
But it looks good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we are very grateful to be gathered this evening. We're grateful for the spirited, yet hopefully kind discussion that we've been able to have and come to an understanding on many important topics. We're grateful for both the blessing of our city and also the challenges. And we pray that we might all, uh, work together for the common good and for those of our citizens and for the mountain upon which we live. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, public comment. Anybody here that would care to make a public comment? Mark, step up. Yeah, I think for.
Okay, uh, I, I was going to comment during my report, but I thought this would be, be better said during public comment. I was going to talk, you know, two, two weeks ago, uh, the city presented that, uh, that city budget video. Very well done, uh, concise, easy to understand, just the right amount of humor and the voice was excellent. So very well done.
That is very soothing.
Yeah, but there was a couple of questions that it left me, at least me, I, you know, I'm the only one that didn't get everything. It's probably just because I'm not as bright as everybody else, but it talked about a two-point-two million dollar budget. And then about one-point-three million of it coming from tax, different tax revenues. And then it highlighted the million-dollar water budget. And then it just went over and didn't talk about that anymore at all. So it kind of left me asking, so, you know, what's the difference on between the, uh, you know, the two-point-one million and the one point, or two-point-two million budget and the one-point-three million resi- red revenue from taxes? You know, how did that enterprise fund weigh into it? Is that part of the two-point-two million? How is that money allocated? You know, does that pay for, you know, some of the staffers? Is all the staff paid? So I, I think it would be nice to see a, a continuation of that video that would connect the rest of the dots. Cause I think it did leave, at least for me, left some unanswered questions and I'm sure there were others felt the same way.
Okay, no, a fair comment. And I, I don't have an answer. Uh, Chris is here in the flesh, maybe he can.
There's an extract.
For Brian.
The two-point-two did not include the water. Um, that was totally separate. And then there are a couple of staff members that are paid out of the water.
Yeah, it's, but it would be nice to see a continuation of that, to, to explain that so that everybody can understand as well as well as understood the first part, because that was very well done. And that would just, like I said, it would connect the rest of the dots and, and it would be much better for transparency too.
Great, no, great suggestion. We'll ask Lynn to start working on the sequel.
Well, because Mark's the narrator.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, anybody else here? Anybody online? With that, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to item eighteen. Uh, actually, let's, uh, do eighteen and nineteen approval of. Okay. Okay, well, I, I will leave it to you.
I make a motion that we approve the entire consent agenda.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lund.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jumping forward to item twenty-one, council approval of a lot line adjustment. Woodland Hills, yeah, I, I didn't, I was thinking we didn't need to do that. That's, planning commission's taking care of it. Okay. Skip that. Twenty-two, resolution approving, well, and this might be one, we're going to wait until we decide on rank choice voting, right? The inter-local cooperation agreement?
They're not necessarily linked.
They're not.
So.
So I think we can go forward to this part.
I think we go forward with this, at least that would be my vote.
All right.
And then we, and then the ranked choice voting would be a separate discussion.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that, the inter-local cooperation agreement between Utah County and the city of Woodland Hills for the municipal elections in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty-three. Um, so I don't, do we need a decision on this one? Uh, this is, I.
Cameras?
I, I, I mean, I guess, I'm not really sure it would be, the decision would be to cancel the existing contract with Classroom Smarts.
I make a motion.
With an RFP.
Well, here, here's, here's the hard part about this is I think there's a couple of loose ends that we need to get from Chris before I would feel comfortable just saying cancel.
Fair enough.
Like what, what?
What's the cost?
Yeah, is there a cost?
The restocking fee and stuff.
Okay.
All that, so.
Fair.
I'd like those loose ends tied up first.
Okay.
So we're going to table that?
But if we want to make a vote saying we want to, uh, you know, give Chris permission to, um, move forward with, or looking, looking at con- canceling the contract, I want that with Cal City. I mean, if we need to do a vote for that, then I'm fine with that, but I don't necessarily.
I don't think we need a vote for that.
Okay.
Table this part until after he comes back.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Uh, then item twenty-four, resolution approving the February twenty-twenty-three check disbursements.
And those are, we're good? All corrected?
Yeah, we just noticed that the January numbers got put into the February resolution and so now the February numbers are.
I'll make a motion then.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh, closed session. There has been some update. Um, I, I can certainly, uh, uh, fill you in. Uh, nothing surprising. It's, it's along the lines of what we've discussed, but we can certainly go into.
We have a, just a quick one?
Sure.
I mean, I'd love to hear the update.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for a legal.
A, a motion to go into closed session for, uh, legal discussions.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Hilliard, seconded by Councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
What did I say? Oh, sorry.
But it's okay, we're interchanging.
Okay. You, you want to go into closed section, my brain switches off at nine oh one and then it's nine oh two.
We'll be fast.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I did, I move we adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.